Twenty-three, okay. Right, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all here. And I see a few featured mayors and professionals in the audience. Thank you all for coming tonight as well, young people. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at 7:00 P.M. And if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, I'll pass it over to Madam Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand, to salute the flag, to say the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clark, will you please call the robe?
Good evening, Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
And Councilmember Rist.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and acknowledge our ceremonial items. First up is Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex Awareness Day, which will be read by Council Member Rist.
Good evening, everyone. Like to call folks forward, yeah, come on up forward. Thank you for being with us. This is a proclamation for Tuberculosis Scler-- it's hard to say, but Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex Awareness Today. So, whereas Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex, TSC, is a rare genetic disorder that leads to the growth of non-cancerous or benign tumors in vital organs, including the brain, heart, kidneys, skin, liver, and lungs; and whereas approximately 50,000 Americans and 1 million people worldwide are living with Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex, a disease that currently has no cure. TSC is a leading genetic cause of both epilepsy and autism, with varying degrees of severity in those affected; and whereas TSC affects individuals differently, with some experiencing severe complications and others remaining undiagnosed due to mild symptoms. TSC can result from a random genetic mutation or be inherited through family lines; and whereas the impact of TSC can lead to life-threatening complications, including brain fluid buildup, heart issues, kidney damage, lung failure, increased risk of cancerous growth, and vision impairment; and whereas the prevalence of TSC is comparable to other well-known conditions such as Lou Gehrig's disease and cystic fibrosis, underscoring the need for greater awareness and understanding; and whereas the City of Durham is committed to raising awareness about Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex, supporting individuals with TSC, and advocating for continued research to access medical care. Now therefore I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby declare, proclaim, May 15, 2025, as Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex Awareness Day in the City of Durham, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 21st day of April, 2025. Leonardo Williams, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you, City of Durham, for officially proclaiming May 15 as TSC Proclamation Day. Your support brings much-needed awareness to Tuberculosis Sclerosis Complex, known as TSC, and hope to family like ours. Our daughter Nora lives with TSC, a rare genetic disorder that causes tumors to form in vital organs such as her brain, kidneys, heart, lungs. It can lead to seizures, which she has on a daily basis, developmental delays, autism, and other serious health issues. Every bit of awareness helps move us closer to better treatments and one day a cure. We invite you to join us at Tanglewood Park in Clemens, North Carolina, on May 3 for our TSC Walk, a day of community support and hope. Thank you for standing with us and with Nora. And can you say your name? Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
What was the location of that again? Clemens, okay, outside of Winston-Salem? Okay, cool. You see how I did that? You're gonna have to say your last name. The honor of reading Community Partner Development Course Graduation Recognition will be--
Laura Beediger.
Beediger, there we go. Laura Beediger will be accepting this behalf of Neighborhood Improvement Services. And I'm really excited to recognize the hard work and dedication of 17 graduates, including three Spanish-speaking residents. The graduates have completed this intensive program, which equips them with leadership, grant-writing, and community engagement skills to help drive change in Durham. Now, this is a very, very important skill set to develop, because we're always seeking grants, and we're always, you know, Durham is a community where we do lots of community engagement, sometimes so much that we think that's the actual project, but that just lets you know that we really care about the input of our community members. So, wanna not only thank you all, but actually bring them up to be recognized. So, I'll pass it over to you. All right, graduates, come on up.
While I do that, I'll start reading. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It is a privilege to stand here today as we recognize the accomplishments of the 2024, 2025 graduates of the Community Partner Development Certificate Program. This initiative reflects our shared commitment to building stronger, more equitable communities through education, collaboration, and action. Since its inception, the Community Partner Development Certificate has embodied the values outlined in our Equitable Community Engagement Blueprint, fostering inclusivity and empowering residents to become active leaders in shaping the future of Durham. This course is offered in partnership with North Carolina Central University and the City's Department of Neighborhood Improvement Services. Among other things, it provides Durham residents with invaluable community-building tools and resources at no cost to participants. Over the past seven months, this year's cohort has explored topics ranging from understanding community dynamics to effective communication, needs assessment, and project design. These graduates have dedicated their time to learning how to engage authentically with their neighbors, navigate complex systems, and advocate for change that benefits everyone. Each of these projects represents not just a vision, but a commitment to action, led by individuals who understand their community's unique challenges and opportunities. This evening, as we present certificates to these exceptional graduates, we celebrate not only their hard work, but also their contributions to building a more equitable and connected Durham. These community leaders are the heart of our city's progress, and their efforts remind us that meaningful change begins with engaged and informed residents. Congratulations to the 2024, 2025 Community Partner Development Certificate graduates. We're excited to see how your leadership will continue to impact Durham. Thank you to the NIS staff, NCCU, and all the instructors and partners who made this program possible. Your dedication to empowering our community is truly inspiring. Let us take a moment to honor and acknowledge the achievements of this cohort and look forward to the positive changes they will continue to bring.
So, when folks are looking for grant writers, because I get that a lot, you know anybody that can write a grant? I know where to send them, so you can make some good part-time money on that. All right, and since I have the mic, I'm gonna go ahead and continue with our next item, Recognizing Fair Housing Month. So, Burt Woodall, Durham Regional Association of Realtors. How are you, Burt?
Good to see you. Today, I have an honor of reading a proclamation here. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States; and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities; and whereas the City of Durham is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all; and whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. More than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated; and whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Durham, and urge all residents to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. So witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 21st day of April. Thank you. And I'll just add to that, that we should really take the words in this proclamation to heart, and let these words symbolize our values and how we live day to day. We won't be derailed by political turbulence to fall away from what this actually means. And anybody that's listening in the state and federal government, I hope they're listening hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Interactive GIS storyboard that highlights CDBG and home-funded projects throughout Durham. This storyboard will be featured on our website beginning April 24th, 2025. The fourth event is a celebration of reinvestment partners Maple Creek Apartments on April 25th, 2025. Approximately 2.85 million of CDBG funding supported the rehabilitation of 42 affordable housing units. These events could not be possible without the efforts of our Citizens Advisory Committee. I have some members standing up here with me. Their goal is to preserve and enhance the quality of life of the citizens of Durham and Durham County by advising the city council and the Board of County Commissioners on housing and community development needs that assist low and moderate income families. The committee consists of 15 members, 12 in which are appointed by the city council. The Citizens Advisory Committee officials include Avon Ashford, Avon Alfred, Rashaki Furnist, and Sherrod Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. At this time, we will hear announcements from council. Councilmember Cook.
Hello. Good evening, everyone, my colleagues, everyone that's here. I think all of the graduates stepped out, but congratulations to them as well, and good evening to folks watching at home. I'm going to try and be brief because I know that we have quite a lot on our agenda this evening, but it has been actually a relatively busy past couple of weeks, so just want to say a few things. The first is that a couple days ago ended my very favorite holiday, which is Passover. This is a time that the Jews remember our exodus from Mitzrayim, the narrow place, and it's an opportunity to spend a lot of time thinking about folks who are still not free and what freedom means and to reflect on the fact that we really can't be free while others are still confined. So, thinking a lot this year about folks that have been disappeared to foreign countries without due process, thinking a lot this year as well about the healthcare workers, the journalists, the innocent civilians that are being bombed by Israel and Gaza, and how connected we are to the global population. We talk a lot about where we've seen a lot of funding cuts and this body recently passed a resolution, and we really celebrate our connection to the global world. And so I think this is a really nice opportunity to have a reflection about what it means to exist and how we are restrained while others are being kept from their freedom. And in keeping with that, I also want to send my condolences to those who were mourning the loss of Pope Francis today. I know that was a, felt like a surprise. I know he had been ill for a few months, and then we saw quite a lot of appearances from him. A really great advocate for the vulnerable, and my understanding is that at the end of his life, his, he was spending nightly conversations with folks in Gaza and wished for Palestine to be free with his last breath. So, a really incredible and impactful figure, and I hope his memory is a blessing for those who follow. The third thing is that I recently had the opportunity to go to Elmira Tennis Courts. I was talking to a couple of my colleagues about this on the way down here. What an awesome court system. I do not play tennis because I tried a few years ago and immediately tore my Achilles and will not be revisiting that, as the mayor knows. It's not a fun injury to recover from. So, I'm impressed, but I met folks who were students, young people all the way up into their 80s who are playing at Elmira Tennis Courts and continuing a legacy of black excellence in tennis that started across the way with a tennis center that was started in 1922, so during segregation, and lots and lots of famous tennis players went through there and competed there, and that legacy continues at Elmira Tennis Courts today, with some people literally like children of those players still playing there today. That is going to be a priority of mine moving forward into budget season. That request has been made for our capital improvement project, or CIP. And I also was thinking about this, and so this is just going to be a question for staff to address at a later time, that there was a conversation ongoing about the investments on the Fayetteville Corridor and Haytai, and we were mapping those out sort of interactive to see the money in the projects that were going on there. I remember that there was a link sent out back maybe in the fall, September or so, and I'm not sure where that went. So, I would love to follow up with that so that we could kind of get a clearer picture of what investments are going on and make sure folks have the ability to collaborate in that space and use those funds to benefit the community. So. Fourth is that I had the opportunity to go to a celebration for Equity Before Birth at the Museum of Life and Science, two things that I really love dearly, and I just want to give a shout out to Equity Before Birth. If you don't know them, this is an amazing Durham organization. I think they have like four or five staff members. It's not very large, but their impact is really, really great. They are working on supporting black families and black birth workers and healthcare workers, and so it was a really cool opportunity to meet lots of people in that space. I met lots of folks that are doing lactation consulting and other familial support, and they just give monetary gifts to folks who need them. And what we see is that, obviously, a lot of things that impact families are the same things that I see in eviction court, and so it is a great organization, and I know it has a lot of impact in the community. So, I just want to shout them out and thank them and thank the Museum of Life and Science for hosting that as well. And then finally, I had a meeting with President Buxton at Durham Tech. Couple of my colleagues went on that with me, and we got to talk a little bit about some projects that are ongoing there and some opportunities for city collaboration. There is an affordable housing project that's going up nearby, and they're also working on some traffic calming measures and some reorganization to make the campus a little bit more cohesive, a little bit more walking friendly. And so I'm excited to see the changes that are going on at Durham Tech. They also are focusing on course completion and on making sure that folks who are leaving that program have, or those programs have not only jobs, but like actually sustainable living wage jobs. And I think particularly given the current economic climate, that feels so, so important. So, we love our, we love our local technical college. I feel like this is going to be a great opportunity for some city collaboration there as well. So, thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook, for all those very beautiful comments from the global to the local, and it's wonderful to see everyone in the room. Thank you all for joining us and for everyone who's watching at home. Thank you all. As we all know, many of the decisions that are being made at the federal level are impacting us and sometimes in very direct ways, but certainly in many different ways. And one of those ways, one of the many ways that we're being impacted negatively is federal funding cuts. And so on Friday, I had the opportunity to visit the Polly Murray Center, which is a wonderful, wonderful space in Durham. And if you haven't been there, I'd encourage you to go ahead and go and visit it. Who, later in the afternoon, a couple hours after I visited the center, learned that they were, they were going to be losing $300,000 that they were originally going to be receiving from the federal government. So, just one of many, many examples of the ways that the decisions that are being made at the federal level are hurting us very badly at the local level, not just us, but small towns, rural areas across our country. I also had the opportunity to sit down with a wonderful group, Hacking Into History. You can go to hackingintohistory.com. A group of Durham residents have been going through and looking at covenants, covenants to properties in Durham, and looking at racially-based covenants and racial covenants and how landowners used to write in restrictions directly based upon race about who could and could not live on certain properties. Now, I think the conversations that they foster in these, in these spaces and these events are very interesting because, yes, they introduce us to a history that we kind of knew about, but they have dug in and found much more detail about racial, racial covenants in our city. And there are similar groups around the country that have done the same thing. But they also have conversations about what are the present-day versions of that that we experience in an ongoing manner that might be more invisible and less, less direct, but that are very much having similar or the same impacts as, as they used to. And so, just a couple of interesting events that I wanted to share with you. Everything is much harder under the current federal government, state government. It's much harder to do great things when wealth is being hoarded by a few wealthy individuals, and we are, we are in deep need of resources to provide better services to our residents. So, we will continue to do that work at the local level, but everything we do locally is connected to the national, is connected to states, connected to the global. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. I want to first shout out our graduates from earlier this evening. That is, I feel like that might be our fourth cohort of graduates, and I just really want to shout out NIS engagement folks because that's been one of the things that you've brought forward, and I love to see so many residents engaged. I think it's what often sets Durham apart, is how much people care here. Additionally, we have a really phenomenal festival coming up this weekend, Biscuits and Banjos. There are tons of free events for the community to participate in, not just the concert at Deepak, so folks should look out for information around that and see how you can go out and be in community. And finally, I think it's our Earth Day Festival, if I'm not mistaken, this coming Sunday, I think at Durham Central Park. So, again, another opportunity for folks to go in community and spend some time with their neighbors in a moment where I think there's a lot of state and federal and international headlines. As somebody who was raised Catholic, the death of Pope Francis, an Argentinian, the first Latin American pope, has hit home. He was a bright spot in a very dark time. He was a Jesuit, and if you are Catholic, if you know the kids who went to Jesuit schools, they're always the smartest. They did a lot of incredible work around education. And the last piece I want to lift up, he was a tireless advocate for immigrants and migrants around the world. It is hard to actually be a Catholic and fully embrace Catholic doctrine. Catholic doctrine is a, is a belief in life at all stages. A good Catholic, in the US, people focus on abortion and pro-life issues, but globally, where people often put their energy is around immigration and migrant issues, on death penalty, on the commitment to seniors and poor people, an embrace of life in all stages and not abandonment of humanity. And that is a very hard thing to do in many of our systems where we are encouraged to exploit and bring forward, I guess, the meanness in humanity. I'm going to end with this, and it's kind of circuitous, but the first protest I ever went to in college, and this dates me, was for a place called the School of the Americas. If you know your Latin American history, you know that this is a notorious place that was based on a army base in Columbus, Georgia. School of the Americas trained with our tax dollars, folks from Latin America in all types of military and other types of training, including torture techniques. Many generals, many of the folks who were behind coups all through Latin America were trained at this base, and so there was a longstanding protest many decades to go every year. And a lot of this was tied to the Archbishop of El Salvador, which we also know El Salvador is in the news a lot right now, Oscar Romero. Oscar Romero was gunned down in the 80s while saying mass because of his belief in liberation theology, which is in Catholic theology, a belief of standing on the poor with the marginalized, because that is what Jesus called you to do. It has a lot of schisms and deep fraughtness in the Catholic Church, but Pope Francis, about six years ago, sainted Oscar Romero. And I think it speaks to the kind of pope that he was, the kind of world he wanted. And so for all of us who are in mourning and for those who could recognize what incredible human he was, I hope we all reflect on that. We reflect on this dark moment that we are in, and we look to him and folks like them who guide us as to how we can actually live our lives in service and in community of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I want to appreciate the comments of my colleagues and wholeheartedly support all that's been stated. It's, it's really hard in these times, and I find it ever, whoo, ever impactful to be here with folks who care so much about the world, and I'll just leave that. But I did want to just say that I left from CCB Plaza, and I'm in a heavy space being up here, and I just want to say that Mr. Good has a child and a family that he leaves behind, and as we think about how hard things are and the way that the world is going, we've got to check in on our people. I mean, we've got to check in on our people. I did want to just say that I know with the implementation of the Office of Survivor Care and our Community Safety Department, I don't know if suicide is covered under that, but I do want to make sure that it is, if it has not been. And just trying to make sure that this is, this is not something that's left. As, as a fellow Christian as well, this is Easter Monday for me, and you know, the loss of a pope, it's similar, it's kind of this, there's a movement of the spirit that it keeps occurring, and in every turn, I can't help but under, like, just understand, like, there's this, this undercurrent of how we treat each other and how we take care of one another. And I can't, I just shake my head. I want to ask people to just kind of lean in, knowing that there are so many who are at the edges, at the margins, whether by ability, by mental health, by wealth. Their struggles have to be ours, and we have to work collectively to figure out how to address it. And yeah, I'm just in a heavy space. I did want to just touch on, I did appreciate the Equity Before Birth dance party. That was a light spot in all of this darkness and a chance to do some line dancing got me prepared. I do want to just say a big shout out to my other half, just celebrated his 50th birthday, and it's really reflective, like, oh my gosh. But I am, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, and I'm just going to leave it at that. And before I wrap up, I did want to just say a very happy birthday to our fellow councilmember, Mayor Protem Middleton as well.
Councilmember Rest.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, colleagues, staff, residents, those online as well. It's great to see you all. My colleagues have mentioned so many of the things I had on my list, so I'll just click, tick them off real quickly and just say a couple of things in addition. But you all have raised some great issues, some heavy ones as well, some, some joyful ones as well. So, for those who celebrate part of faith traditions, it was a big week last week, beautiful weather, but also it was, it was Holy Week. It was also the week of Passover, which ended on Sunday. Thank you, Councilmember Cook, for the, for the matzah dessert treat. That was really awesome. Thank you for that. I wanted also send a shout out to the Restoration Place, which is led by pastor Eric Smith, who works for, by the way, for Durham Housing Authority. It's also the church where Millicent Rogers, who chairs our school board, attends. They invited me to come speak at their Good Friday service about the seven last words of Jesus, an amazing service and quite an experience. I really want to thank them for the invitation to join them. Of course, each of Sunday was a great day, beautiful weather, and then we hear the next day of the death of Pope Francis, who was truly a transcendent leader. As, I mean, Councilmember Caballero, you said it better than anyone could. He's such a, like, uniquely powerful voice, prophetic voice for the poor, like, a one-time leader from the global south and Latin America. So, we'll never forget Pope Francis. And in the words of Matthew, I think we can just say, "Well done, good and faithful servant" to Pope Francis. An amazing life, and we'll miss him. You know, y'all didn't mention Friday, the 11th, the mayor spoke at the installation of the 13th Chancellor of Central University, Dr. Kerry Dixon. That was awesome. Councilmember Caballero and I were there to see that. It was a great event, and we're so proud of Central and are so excited about the leadership of Dr. Dixon for the next, for the next coming time at Central. It's so exciting. We're blessed to have her as a leader in Durham. I did join Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Cook in the meeting with J.B. Buxton last week to hear about all the great plans at Durham Tech. Durham Tech is an absolutely central player in the, in fact, the central player in the school-to-work pipeline. It's so important in Durham to make sure all kids have the skills to succeed in the workplace, and they're doing great things at Durham Tech. As Councilmember Cook said, new buildings, new housing, also working on traffic calming there on Lawson Street that goes right through the campus to make it more of a campus and more of a place that people can actually not only do their work, but stay and communicate and be with their students, fellow students and teachers. So, exciting work. I'm really excited about J.B.'s leadership of the community of college, and I think there's great things to come for Durham, from Durham Tech. The dance party fundraiser with Equity Before Birth was a total blast. Joyce Spencer is a completely phenomenal leader that works, she does it Equity Before Birth. Everyone needs to know about the work they do. I'm so excited about their work and so grateful for their friendship with Ms. Spencer. She's a great leader, and I'm so excited to have been part of that fundraiser. And then he asks our hearts to go out for, to Mr. Atreus Good and his family. He was also incredibly gifted leader in the youth mentorship space. We used to work together over in the, in the Mutual Building and the Providence 1898 space. Great leader, great friend, and I'm so sorry to see him pass away, and my hearts go out to his family and all his friends and our community. We've lost an important leader, Mr. Good. So, thanks for mentioning that. Councilmember Freeman. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor, and to my colleagues. Thank you all so much for such wonderful and, as always, this on-point announcement tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, for the birthday shout out. I deeply appreciate it. My, my good wishes and well wishes to all of our Jewish brothers and sisters here in the city of Durham, our neighbors and residents and friends, and pray you had a peaceful Passover, and to my Christian brothers and sisters, to our citizens here in Durham residents that are of the Christian faith, pray you had a wonderful Eastern resurrection celebration. I thank Councilmember Cook for really beautiful reflections on, on the real-world implications of the Passover, and I echo them, and we are, who are of the Christian faith, look at the season of a time of renewal and, and life and taking advantage of another chance of getting up after a catastrophic fall. So, I want to, I want to put that out there, particularly in these times as a city. Also, I want to send condolences to all of our Catholic, observant Catholic brothers and sisters and citizens and residents of Durham on the passing of your holy father, the pontiff, the Pope Francis. What a compelling figure. And the conversations he started with this ancient, this ancient and conservative institution from, from the role of women in the church to the role of LGBTQ members of the church to the environment. I found him so compelling that I added to my bucket list at some point, seeing the public audience in St. Peter's Square in Rome, him ride through. And I'm so grateful I had the opportunity to do that. In 2022, got to see Pope Francis in the Pope Mobile ride through St. Peter's Square, and I'm glad I made time for that. I think he made eye contact with me and smiled. There were a lot of people there. I can't be certain, but that's the way I'm going to tell the story from now on. So, our prayers go out to the over billion people in the world today who are mourning the passing of their pastor, and particularly those of us, our residents and friends here in Durham who are of the Catholic faith. Finally, I want to thank Councilmember Freeman for mentioning the vigil. I had the opportunity to stop by the vigil for Atreus Good in CCB Plaza. What a brilliant young man, an unusual young man. Folk who are possessed of genius oftentimes process things differently. They feel differently. They carry things differently. Those of us that are not burdened with that characteristic, sometimes we'll look at folk who are possessed of genius and not quite get them all the time and struggle how to figure them out. But this, this young man was possessed of genius, was a bright light, a dear young fraternity brother to the mayor and I. I don't remember how many years ago I met Atreus and he became a conversation partner, but one thing I do remember is when we, when we empaneled our racial equity task force, we were getting ready to seat our racial equity task force, and we were getting ready to do it without one black man on it, on the racial equity task force. There were no African-American men on the slate. We were getting ready to vote him. And I remember Atreus saying to me two powerful words, "Really, brother?" Very direct, and he didn't have to say anything else. I know what he meant. So, so we asked for the vote to be held up and did some work, and of course, the rest is history. We empaneled an incredibly brilliant, diverse racial equity task force that presented an incredible report on which we're still working, but that's part of his legacy, being on, on that task force and making sure that we focus on the things that are important to his family, to Suki, his beloved, and to his daughter of heart, and to all those who loved him. A lot of people are hurting, as Councilmember Freeman said today, but we're going to be all right. I'll end with this. Stevie Wonder sung the words, "As today I know I'm living, but tomorrow might make me the past, but that I mustn't fear, because I'll know deep in my mind the love of me I've left behind, and I'll be loving you always until the day is night and night becomes his day." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. One thing about going live to the announcements is you all pretty much say everything, and sometimes Councilmember Freeman might have one more, so I'll do that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I, you know, I get a little emotional, so. I'm not sorry about being emotional. I'm just sorry to have to butt back in. But I did want to just make sure that I didn't, I appreciate Mayor Protem bringing up the NCC. I do want to just address the elephant in the room, just acknowledging how difficult it is in these times to see some students engaging in peaceful protests and being confronted by officers and not, not being able to address it in a way that I felt was appropriate. I just really want to make sure I do state very clearly that I did not. It doesn't sit well with me, what I saw, and I just saw pictures. I have not seen video, understand this video, and whatever is happening on that campus, I just want to make sure that folks know we are here and we can, we can do a better job with our students on campus, especially at this historically black college and university. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all, of those who spoke about our beloved fraternity brother, Atreus. Some folks in the public who don't know who he is may be wondering, you know, well, you know, who is this person? He's a very talented, very intelligent young man who, yes, he was our fraternity brother, but also he is who I was working with directly in establishing the framework for supporting mentoring organizations across this entire city. That was his life, his life's work, and he's leaving with us the legacy of that work, and I translate his legacy into an assignment to continue the work we were doing together. Many of you all have heard me talk about the Bull City Future Fund. That was associated, in a sense, with the work that he was doing with the Young Mentor Collaborative. The funds that the city was, you know, we was able to get a grant, and he was partnering with the city in the Office on Youth to build out this framework. So, we were doing a lot of work for the children in this community. I can tell you that not everyone in this community is nice all the time, and I think we need to make sure we check ourselves because you never know how deep it'll cut. You never know. So, just, just keep that in mind as we be sensitive to folks that are, that are battling things that are none of your business. Okay? And thank you all also for, speaking of the passing of the pope. The pope has, I mean, this is the first pope I've ever paid attention to, and he embodied courage. And I know this is acting, but if you just watch the movie Conclave, and this depiction of the politics in the Roman Church, it's very interesting. It's not real life, but the politics are definitely there. Ever someone to step up in the face of such historic tradition of one way of thinking and then to be all. You know, DEI is just an acronym, but as I've stated before, if it's your values that can't be taken away, and he But as I've stated before, if it's your values that can't be taken away, and he embodied those values. And that is why I paid attention. So, rest in peace. So, I did not know that Durham was being watched so much on a national scene. And one thing that folks have been watching is some of the, this is before my time, but some of the policies, colleagues that were on the council before me, the decisions you made around lighting in the city, the staff innovatively proposed to you all in the past. Well, it's being watched. And on Thursday, I'll be sitting on a stage in front of about 1,500 people talking about the lighting in Durham and some of the innovative work we're doing around climate sustainability or climate resilience and action plans, how our lighting, the switching out of LEDs, how we use lighting as a convening, and also some of the, just some of the climate policies. I'll be sitting on stage talking about these things that have been worked on over the past time on a stage in front of 15 people as the only mayor from the United States in London. So, really excited to represent us there. And they were so interested that they said, "Don't even use your taxpayer dollars. We're bringing you over to represent your city." So, I'm really excited to put Durham on the international stage. And so, I won't see you all on Thursday, but I'll be watching. So, Councilmember Freeman, don't talk about me while I'm gone. All right? We also had the Raleigh-Durham Startup Week recently. And the first, well, year before last, we had about 1,500 people show up. This year, we had about 2,500 people show up. And these are folks that are registering as founders of startups, and there are funders from all over the country here. And it was just an amazing opportunity, and I just want to continue to support and uplift that, specifically WOC Stars. That's W O C, Stars, who's an African-American woman, venture capitalist. And she awarded five startups right here in Durham, and we will be celebrating that. So, we're going to do a public announcement really soon to acknowledge the small startup, small businesses here locally where they're getting significant investment. I know it sounds crazy to some people, but I really do want to build and grow a Fortune 500 company out of Durham, and I know it's possible. Before I got here tonight, I gave opening remarks to the senior games. They are kicking off this evening, and I want to wish them well as they compete. We have like one of everything, so they're all going to advance to the state level. So, let's make sure the next two weeks, we are cheering our senior citizens on as they compete in a multitude of activities. Of course, y'all talked about Equity Before Birth Dance Party. I'm going to, I was thinking about it. I had a dance with a young girl, and I am going to post that tonight on my socials. We had a ball, and I'm just going to post just so y'all can see how fun it was. I had a suit on, but we were jamming. Yeah, I can really dance. I couldn't dance in the video, but I do know how to dance. I see Councilmember Freeman down there talking about me. But also, that same evening, we celebrated with Urban Ministries at their gala, and also again with the chancellor and her ceremonies at NCCU. That morning, yes, we installed the 13th Chancellor of North Carolina Central University. And let me tell you all something. She is doing a dynamite job. And yes, I know, there was protests happening on campus. And yes, let me say for the record, there was an overreaction. It was to the students who were peacefully protesting. And it was an overreaction by the police officers that were there. And they're human. They're not perfect, you know? And this isn't something that happens all the time. I know when I was at NCCU, we had an amazing relationship, and you don't hear this all the time, but you will hear this because it went viral. But I don't want to let this one situation be the defining characteristic of the university's presence. Why? Because while that protest was going on, the chancellor was not out there. She was actually in Raleigh. She was in Raleigh lobbying for the $162-plus million for housing and facility revitalization on campus. And guess what? She's working on both sides of the owl in the proposed budget. So, there is some movement happening. I think the students should be able to protest. They should be able to outcry. And they should be able to state what their needs are. And I'm grateful that we have a chancellor that actually listens to them and is actually fighting for them. So, what I've said is I hope that the students and the chancellor work in unity to urge the General Assembly to honor her request so that North Carolina Central University can ensure that the students are having the living conditions that they deserve. I will say that is not the whole characteristic of the university, but if it's, you know, that way for some students, and therefore, they need to be heard, and I support that. Just in closing here, spent the week, last week in Washington, DC at the African-American Mayors Association, spent some time on a few panels, talking about some of the health initiatives we have going on here in Durham. But I'm grateful to say I was elected to the Board of Trustees, colleagues, and I'll be representing us on a national scale with the African-American Mayors Association. I got a chance to meet my twin, Michael Strehan. And I walked in the room, and he was talking. He just said, "Wait a minute. Wait. Hey, dude, are you, are we related?" So, you sound like everybody else. But yeah, it was a little hilarious. But while there, spent some time with some corporate business counsel and partners. And many of you know about the Economic Empowerment and Financial Literacy Tour I did earlier this year called the Mayor's Financial Playbook. Well, we are working on some corporate investment in that. So, hopefully, everything goes well. And if it does, we will continue that and at an even larger scale. And also, let's make sure we shout out a happy belated birthday to Major the Bull, which was just recently. All right? And in closing, in closing, I want to make sure that we are supporting our local small businesses. It's very important. I don't say that because I'm one. Well, I would love you to support all of us, actually. But some of our small businesses, you know, some of us import internationally. Durham is known for having just the best quality dining experiences. And I met with a local coffee shop today, and coffee, the rare, the raw commodity, has doubled in price because Brazil and Venezuela had really dry crops this year. So, you have that increase in supply, decrease in, I mean, increase in demand, increase in demand, decrease in supply. And so, they're trying to navigate that, but now there's a 25% tariff. So, you know, when your coffee gets more expensive, I hope that we'll, you know, we'll make the sacrifice to support our local businesses in any way we possibly can. Times are tough right now, and it's going to be turbulent until we can get some stability at the federal level and we get some adults in the room. So, with that being said, we're going to make some adjustments to the agenda tonight, colleagues. And I will navigate us through that. There are some hearings tonight, and as I pass it over to manager, Mr. Manager, he will give us a little instructions. But I will say item number 23 will be the first public hearing that we have. But Mr. Bo, Mr. Manager, if you can direct us on the others, 24 in the announcement. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Portem, members of council, the city manager's office has one priority item this evening, and that is agenda item number 24. This is a supplemental item that's been added. It is a Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Project Ordinance for Recycling Education and Outreach. Just by way of explanation, this was submitted after your work session, so it hasn't been heard on work session, but it is on your agenda this evening because it's a timely matter to get it adopted. Staff is here if you have any questions, but it is a routine item. And then, as the mayor indicated, just as a courtesy to our sign language interpreters this evening, we ask that when we get to general business public hearings, that item 23 go first as that is a requirement of that public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
You got it. If we can put this on consent, correct? Because we don't need to put accepted money in a work session, right, colleagues? We can just bring it on. All right. All right.
Do you want me to make a motion to move it to the consent agenda?
Either way, right. Okay. So, let's just go ahead and do it. And I was going to put it on consent, but we can just go ahead and accept it now.
Oh, okay. I was, I made a motion to move it to consent, but it doesn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'll entertain a motion to add this.
No moves.
I'll second that, yeah.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. It's a delay. Hang on one moment. There we go. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously. Sorry, I'm a little rusty.
No worries. No worries. You got it. Madam Attorney, on you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Portem. Happy birthday. And members of the city council, it's good to see you. The city attorney's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Portem, and members of city council. The city clerk's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I will read our consent agenda. Number one, participatory budgeting steering committee appointment. Number two, mayor's Hispanic/Latino Committee appointments. Not pulling it, but Councilmember Cabo, you was mentioning something about this to me, so just remind me. Okay. Item number three, Durham Workers Rights Commission appointments. Number four, approval of city council minutes. Number five, city code amendment for water and sewer connections.
Number five's been pulled.
Yep. Thanks for that. And that's the only one. Number six, contract with Corporate Facts Incorporated for the preparation of the five-year 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan, 2025 Annual Action Plan, Citizen Participation, Participation, Plan, 2025-2029 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice.
Appears that one's been pulled as well.
All right. Number seven, Trails at Twin Lakes Development Loan Commitment. Number eight, Second Amendment Contract 18394 between the city of Durham and Durham County, Durham County for the provision of the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPWA, Housing Assistance and Related Supportive Services. Number nine, Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment Pre-Assessment and Design Bill Contracts with MLS Electric Incorporated. Number 10, First Amendment to Climate Corps Agreement between the city of Durham and Strategic Energy Innovations Incorporated. Number 11, Preliminary Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Construction Manager at Risk, C Mar, Contract with La Chaise Construction Services LLC for the City Hall and Annex HVAC Project. Number 12, Parking Facilities Structural Maintenance Fiscal Year 24, Package Number One, Project Contract Change Order Number Two with Carolina Restoration and Waterproofing Incorporated. Number 13, Drainage Structure Improvements, SD 2025-02. 14, Contract with Municipal Media Corps for Recycle Coach and All-in-One Waste and Recycling Communication Tool. Number 15, Contract with Charisoft Technology Corporation to Purchase Nutanex Licenses. Number 16, Contract with Sharp Leasing USA Corp for Leasing and Upgrade of Printer Fleet. Number 17, Municipal Maintenance Agreements with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Signing and Pavement Marking Work Performed on State Roads. Number 18, Consolidated Annexation, Romero Residence. Number 19, Consolidated Item Page Miami Design District. Number 20, TC 24003, Privately Initiated Unified Development Ordinance, UDO Text Amendment. Number 21, Consolidated Annexation Page Corners. Number 22, Map Change, Zoning Map Change 1202 LS Road. Number 23, Proposed Substantial Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2021-2022, Fiscal Year 2022-2023, Fiscal Year 2023-2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plans for Community Development Block Grant CDBG and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPWA. And of course, the supplemental item here, which was just added, number 24, Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Project Ordinance for Recycling Education and Outreach. That is our consent agenda with the exception of items five, six.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
And of course, the public hearing items we'll get to in the public hearing. All right, I'll entertain a motion, please. I heard Councilmember Cook and
Second.
Second, Mayor Portem. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. All right. First item, let's see, it was number five, then number six. First item, number five. This was pulled by community members. They're online. All right, Ms. Ross, Katie Ross, can you hear me? Ms. Ross, can you hear me? Ms. Motley Pearson, Tina, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You can hear me.
All right, go ahead. I'll come back to you, Katie, if you can hear me. All right, welcome. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Williams and Durham City Council. My name is Tina Motley Pearson, and my address is on file. So, regarding the city code amendment for water and sewer connections, for one thing, I'd like to say that I am happy to hear that there will be no services extended outside the urban growth boundary. However, I do have some concerns about sewer services. So, it's my understanding that systems damaged by blasting can hook onto city sewer, but the sewer lines in front of my house, for example, will be pressurized, which means no one can hook onto it except the intended development, which is KB Homes. So, how many of these sewer lines are pressurized so that no one, except the intended development, can hook onto it? And if this is the case, then hooking onto city sewer, if your system is damaged, is a problem. So, I'd like to ask the question, has anyone looked into this issue regarding this amendment? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have a response?
Robert Joyner with the Public Works Department. I worked with Scott Weidman to develop these changes, and these changes are actually being brought about by changes to the comprehensive plan. And so, these things were organized. In response to Ms. Motley Pearson's question about force mains, so as projects are developed in this area, some of them will be served by gravity sewer. Some of them will be served ultimately by pump stations. And as these pump stations are built, essentially, they are created low point, and then they will pump the waste back to the treatment plant. That is, there's two of them served by Durham, but in this location, they'll be served by the north treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. And so, those pump stations and those force mains are not set to be tied into. Those are the relief systems. The gravity sewers that all connect to those pump stations are where you would ultimately connect. And as development is building additional systems in this area, that will ultimately build out. And if you are in a situation where your septic system and other systems are next to these gravity systems that'll be put in place, you'll have the ability to connect through this ordinance. And this ordinance, you had the ability to connect before this ordinance makes additional changes. This ordinance makes additional changes to allow a slightly wider ability to deal with some of those issues like blasting and other types of things that destroy. some of those issues like blasting and other types of things that destroy some of these issues, and kind of just broadens it a little bit so we can have things other than just water quality as a way to connect.
Thank you for that. Ms. Ross, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yep, there you go, welcome, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say on this issue that I believe that the council should look at the wording of the proposed amendments a little more carefully, because when you look at Rule Seven, or the Part Seven that is being proposed to be changed, they include two properties with verified water supplies of unsatisfactory quality, including a collapsed well, that's fine, but unsatisfactory water supply quantity. And my question is, quantity for what? Quantity for a single household or quantity for an apartment building with 400 units? And you guys know, I'm an attorney, and I know that if there's a loophole like this in here, it will be attempted to be exploited. The Part Eight that restricts application to properties of 20 acres or less with a maximum of two households, that doesn't apply to Part Seven. So my suggestion is that you look at this language again and ask yourselves, how can this be exploited to allow for developers to come in and ask for connection to city waterways with... For large developments, and not as we've been told, just for one or two. Second, on Part B, where it talks about the new utility extension agreement, or can be modified either extension agreement that shall be subject to City Council approval as determined by the city manager. Well, does that even allow for you to be notified if the city manager doesn't decide that the council should be notified? I'm just thinking that you need to tighten up this language if you really want it to be limited in the way that it's been told to us it's going to be limited. So that's just my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion. And at this time, staff, I'll ask that you all can just respond by written email to the concerns. Thank you. Next item is...
A motion.
Yeah, actually, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt item number five. Water Amendment for Water and Sewer Connections.
Move this printed.
Second.
I'm readiness, I just want to make sure we have some clarity on whether they do intend to... Because I don't... She brings up a very good point. Is it intended for a single household or not? That's all.
Yeah, no, they're going to respond. They're going to respond.
And then before we move forward, before we...
Good evening, I'm Scott Weidman with the Plane Department. This amendment only applies to existing properties for one or two units. There's no... Cannot be, if you're looking for three or more, then you would have to apply for annexation.
That was all, thank you.
What's the question?
All right. At this time, it's been moved... Who is the motion? Okay, all right, got a motion. Mayor Protem moved and seconded by Councilmember Rest. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Was item number six? Yeah, item number six as well. What was that? Okay. Do I have Alejandro Ruiz? I'm doing well, thank you. Welcome. And you have three minutes.
Yeah, better with me, this is my first time, so...
Oh, you're doing well already.
So today, we were talking about fair housing in community development and all that. So one of the things, you know, I kind of noticed, you know, there's a lot of people that came from New York, you know, they have a different cost of living, things like that, they moved down to North Carolina, and maybe their house is worth 20 bucks, and because they get a better income and all that, you know, they bought the house maybe for 30, 35 bucks, just an example. So some of the people that we have been living in North Carolina since 1996, and so it kind of affect the people that has been living in Durham for a very long time. And I think, you know, there should be something to help out the people that has lived in Durham and make Durham, you know, to have, maybe after three years, you know, maybe property taxes, it can be a different way to, you know, to do the assessment. On those individuals, the other thing is going to be, you know, for senior citizens, you know, they are in a fixed income. And a lot of time will affect them, and when I was sitting over here, I talked to a couple people, including myself, we're thinking about living there, because some of the taxes, you know, they're getting a little higher. And, you know, I've been... I'm from another country, I'm from Nicaragua, I came over here, and I'm blessed to have a house. And then a long time ago, you know, I used to sleep in my car for about three years. There was a family, you know, helped me out, you know, brought me food, six days a week, seven days, he's a young, young. And, you know, and probably he don't know about that family, there was the gentleman right there, the Jones family, that helped me out. So now I have my own home, and I'm looking, you know, at people elderly, you know, that live in Durham, you know, some of them are unable to afford the taxes, and they have to leave. So I'd like to know if we can do something about it for the people that have formed Durham. And I understand, you know, there's affordable housing, you know, like Section A for some of the people and all that. And I understand, you know, there's some money that has to be put on the side to help them out, but at the same time, we're the middle class. We pay taxes, and you guys use some of our taxes, you know, to help out the people, you know, and, you know, that cannot afford. So like I said, this is my first time, and, you know, I love this country, you know, I'm from Nicaragua, it's a communist country, just like Venezuela. Or they allow you to protest, middle of the night, get killed. You can look it up, Daniel Ortiz is the president. And over here, you know, I have a lot of freedom, like you say, you know, sometimes you can protest and do things like that, you know, this country has given us a lot of freedom, but at the same time, we like to keep our homes and be able to, you know, afford the taxes that we've got to pay for. And I do appreciate you guys, you know, listening, and like I said, it's my first time, and according to the agenda, number six, that was the closest one, so I can talk to you guys. And we're talking about religion, you know, God has risen, and thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You see that young man back there named Derek, who's raising his hand?
Yes, sir.
He's about to meet with you, and he's going to get you your information, and what he's going to do is follow up with you on our tax relief grant.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, low-income homeowner relief, yeah.
So we have some resources, and he's going to get you information so we can get you all of those.
Yes, sir.
But we should have a longer conversation around how this whole tax thing works.
Yes, sir.
Property value raises 74%.
Yes.
And then how decisions we make impact that.
Yes, sir.
But you make a very valid point, and it's what we love and hate each other about most of the time.
Yes, sir.
How we manage the tough decisions that we have to make around housing.
Yeah.
And supply and demand, and the conditions of living, and all of those things. So this is your first time speaking, but you just probably went to the very core of the issue of what makes politics complicated. So you go see him.
Yes, sir. One thing, being told about him, sometimes we've got to take care of the people behind us.
Yeah.
Probably might not affect me a little, but I will do that, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Yeah. All right, and the next person was Roy Jones.
Mr. Mayor, Roy Jones actually rescinded his right to speak, so he no longer wanted to.
Okay, sounds good. All right, at this time, thank you for that, Alejandro. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Move this printed from items.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Councilmember Caballero, am I allowed to vote? Oh, okay, cool. Never mind, I'm not going to forge your vote, you're fine. It'll put you as affirmative. Madam Clerk, please close the vote.
And...
I ask you to close it before I press yes, so you can record mine as yes, sorry, I was just...
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Next item is number 23.
Good evening again, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, City Council members. We're going to talk about the public hearing. Again, my name is Tanya Coleman, Assistant Director of Strategy with the Community Development Department. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen comments on the proposed substantial amendment to the FY 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan, FY 2021-22, FY 2022-23, FY 2023-24, FY 2024 and 25 Annual Action Plan for a Community Development Block Grant and the Housing Opportunity for People with AIDS, Persons with AIDS. These proposed substantial amendments are available for public review starting March 24, 2025 to April 23, 2025. The Citizen Participation Plan contained in the adopted 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan requires that a public hearing be conducted for formal amendments to add, delete, or substantially change the consolidated plan or annual action plan. The purpose of the proposed amendment is forfoil, to reallocate funding to the FY 2023... I'm sorry, 2022-23 Administration and Planning, and the FY 2024-25 Section 108 Loan Deficits Payment to ensure the timely expenditure of the Community Development Block Grant, which is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Two, to add additional eligible activities and correct goal outcome indicators in the FY 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan for Housing Opportunity with Persons with AIDS. Three, to correct the GIO and project description for the Durham County Department of Social Services HOPWA Project Sponsored 2025-2024 Action Plan. And four, to add and reallocate funding to the FY 2023-24, FY 24-25 Annual Action Plan to the Resource Identification Activity of the HOPWA Program. This notice... Notice of this meeting was properly advertised in the Herald Sun and Cape House newspaper, distributed via the Department's General List serve, as well as Community Development webpage and the City of Durham's webpage. In closing, a summary of the comments of the public hearing and ring comments received by citizens concerning the proposed amendments will be incorporated into the final document. Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard from the staff. I'll now declare this public hearing open. All right, so I have a... And colleagues, I'll come back to us after a comment. I have Tiffany Swoop. And after Tiffany Swoop, I have Carolyn Hinton, Crystal Graves.
Hello, everyone.
And Haley Cunningham. If you all can... You'll be able to, instead of me interrupting, just follow that order. Thank you.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Hello, everyone, I'm Tiffany. Mostly everyone knows me by my organization, Grace Inc. However, I am in Durham, and social justice is my passion. A lot of the projects you all named, I am actually a part of. I was a part of the mentoring movement with Mr. Atreus Gu, one of the architects of the DYMA Alliance. I actually helped him name the mayor's initiative and asked him to stick it in your office, mayor. I'm also a part of housing. Housing, I had a career that spanned 15 or more years in housing. I am an of low-income housing tax credit, affordable housing professional. With that being said, all of these resources that you all are talking about, I've managed a $300 million portfolio with over 100 multifamily projects throughout the state of Georgia and did it with excellence. To that end, I was solely named by the governor's office for my contributions. Most importantly, I am here tonight as a part of EHE Durham in the HIV epidemic in Durham. This is a huge heartstring of mine. It includes the most vulnerable, the ones who've been cast aside, cast aside, just like the kids that I serve in Cornwallis. Durham is known as the city of medicine, yet we are facing a growing public health crisis. We rank fourth in North Carolina HIV rates, while other countries see declines, ours continue to rise, excuse me, counties. Housing is healthcare, people with stable housing are far more likely to manage effectively. Still, Durham left over $1.3 million in federal housing funds with HIV unused in recent years. If we want to end the epidemic, we must lead with a housing-first approach. Stable homes save lives, reduce transmission, and upholds Durham's legacy of healthcare leadership. To that end, I just want to share that I contributed to a very successful multifamily tax credit HIV project in Georgia. And what I will say is, I have seen how the success that's created when local governments engage the experts like your Community Resources Care, Inc., Dr. Haley over at Duke, Tiffany in multifamily housing, together we could really create an impact and reduce the disparity of the health status in Durham. There's a huge disparity of where people in Durham believe health is and where the pulse of it is today. We need your support. People are dying every day. I've watched the homeless population grow around my office. I've watched the homeless population grow in Cornwallis, where people are being evicted in mass rates, and not to mention the opioid epidemic that's increasing the HIV epidemic as well. Thank you, we need your help.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. And don't stop.
Good afternoon, council members.
Good afternoon.
I am Carolyn Hinton. I'm the Executive Director for Healing with Care in Durham. We've been working in Durham to help the people with lived experience for over 30 years now. We've provided housing for them, and we've recently had a listing of the information that the person from the CDG just read about. We belong to a coalition to end HIV here in Durham, and we are committed to doing that. One of the things that will do that is housing first, making sure that people with HIV have adequate, affordable housing here in Durham. A number of, and I speak from a boots-on-the-ground perspective, because I help people face-to-face in finding housing or trying to locate housing. We have looked at the amendments that was made and was presented, and we need to have included in that amendment our coalition. It's over 40 members of the community that have gotten together and are really emotionally charged about this issue of providing adequate housing. We can do this, because HUD has furnished HOPWA grants. Justice was mentioned before, over a million dollars was left on the table and will be returned to HUD, and it should not be. We do not have adequate funding and the right sources in order to help the people that we need to help. So I'm asking you to have, or instruct, or include our housing coalition as ones that will help us to pave the way for these people to have adequate, appropriate housing.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone. My name is Crystal Graves. I am the Vice President in the Cornwallis community located here in Durham under Durham Housing Authority. Many of you, council, have gotten or received my email. I need help. I'm sorry. I need help because I can't do it by myself. And we need help. We really need help. I am not condoning and people not paying their rent, but Housing Authority is evicting at a very fast rate. And my kids, they don't have anywhere to go, and they're getting off the school buses. And they don't have nowhere to go. So sometimes I have to figure out who house they're going to stay the night at. And I just want them to be able to go to school. Some of them are not going to school. They don't know how to spell their name. They don't know their colors or their numbers. And I know you all go home to your houses. And I live there, and I'm trying my best. I have two beautiful daughters of my own. And I am trying. I'm trying so hard, but I need help, and I can't do it by myself. I am one person. I am one person. And I really, I really need help. And I, I understand people are trying to bring mentorship, but you cannot bring mentorship when there's a high substance abuse issue. People are on fentanyl and everything else under the sun. We need onsite therapy and onsite counseling. We need it in the community. I'm not asking for no one to do it for free. Most of us get Medicaid, including the children. So whoever the therapist in the counseling is, they'll get paid. I just need them onsite in the community so that we can get help. Because people are getting evicted and they're doubling up in houses. And I don't know what to do because, again, I'm one person. So I'm, please, please just help us. That's all I'm asking, is for some type of help, for some type of initiative to be in place. I can help you. If anybody needs to know anything about my community, I am the go-to. I can tell you, but my kids need help. Thank you so much.
Um, colleagues, I did, thank you, Ms. Graves. I did want to share that I did see that email this morning. I did forward along, and I did ask our city manager to kind of check in on that. So I just wanted to let you all know. I did touch that one this morning.
Thank you.
There it is. Okay, great. Hi, my name's Haley Cunningham. I'm an infectious diseases physician dedicating my career to caring for those living with HIV. I am here with Sarah Schmidt, who is an HIV social worker because we're tired of watching people in our community develop AIDS and die because of lack of adequate housing support services. Our coalition agrees wholeheartedly with adding all HOPA-eligible activities to the Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan to allow for greater flexibility. To ensure proposed goals and interventions align with community needs and resources, we request that the coalition to end the HIV epidemic in Durham be consulted at all stages of decision-making and implementation. Coalition members include community-based organization leaders who have provided HIV and housing care for over 30 years, as well as clinicians, researchers, housing specialists, and other support organizations. Coalition members have identified significant flaws in the currently proposed amendments and budget. For example, there's a vague proposal to correct goal outcome indicators for the Consolidated and Annual Action Plans. We are concerned that correcting the GOIs will equate to lowering service goals without quantifying or considering the need in our community. GOIs should be evidence-based and focused on what is possible rather than what was or was not achieved in the prior two years. Additionally, effectively administering each component of HOPA will require at least one full-time employee, yet only 25,000 to 50,000 is allocated yearly for each component. As the proposed budget stands, the City of Durham, that is Community Development, will receive the largest funding increase. And this is just copied and pasted from the proposed budget showing that project administration is primarily going to DSS to, to do, to be determined entity for a T-BRA. And then most of, a large proportion of increased funding is going to the City of Durham. Here, too, we see another snippet from, of the proposed budget. And we see that project administration for the to-be-determined sections, which is community-based organizations, is allowing less than 40,000 for each kind of full-time position, where this might take one or two people at least to administer. And then the increase is going, again, to the, the City of Durham, which would be Community Development. Given years of mismanagement, we request that this funding should instead be allocated to community partners with proven experience and dedication in this area. We appreciate the request for proposals issued by Community Development, but even this was ill-informed as it is unlikely to support a viable system of care. The proposed model of funding allocation is based on reimbursing organizations rather than, rather than, for them to administer HOPA services, and no organization has the funding to do that without funding upfront.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry. Actually, colleagues, at this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed back before the council. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Cook.
Thank you.
Staff, are we prepared?
And thank you for the folks who came out to speak tonight. I've been going to some of the coalition meetings and just want to echo what was said, which is that there's a lot of expertise on that coalition and a lot of folks who've been doing this work for a really, really long time, boots-on-the-ground, like really, really doing this, interacting with the community. So I just, I had a couple of questions. The first one is, can, can y'all address? We've heard it a couple of times, and I think I asked it before, but I'm going to ask it again, if money was sent back or not utilized that was HOPA-specific? And, and why that was and how much?
So, good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, council members, fellow city staff. Maggie Carnegie, Planning and Performance Manager with the Community Development Department. As far as the recapturing of, of funds from HUD, Councilmember Cook, if that's what I'm, I'm understanding, we have not had funding recaptured in, in recent timeframe. I, I will share, I, I do believe that we did have some 2018 HOPA program funding recaptured. The amount, I believe, was $24,000. And I'll share that HOPA period of performance is three years without requesting extensions. We do have the opportunity to do that on a two-year basis, but that is pending approval by HUD. But that is older funding. That's period of performance is, is long past complete. And given our current grants, we have not had any funding recaptured in, in recent years. Did I address your question?
Yes, thank you. And so my next question is, a couple of the speakers talked about the wanting the coalition to be included as a resource. Have you all looked into that? And can you speak to what that would look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess a couple things. Right now, there was reference to a competitive request for proposals for HOPA funding. It is open right now. It opened April 10th and closes May 21st. And so we do encourage members of the coalition to review that RFP. We've allocated over $1.3 million of funding that's competitively available. It covers an array of activities, including tenant-based rental assistance or T-BRA. We have supportive services, permanent housing placement, and short-term rent mortgage utility assistance. Then there is also project sponsor administration. I do want to mention that the project sponsor administration is capped at 7% given an award to a project sponsor. So if, say, we awarded someone $100,000 to administer T-BRA, only 7% of that can be used for project sponsor administrative eligible costs. We equate that to indirect services. More specifically, direct staff time spent administering T-BRA in this example could be applied to the T-BRA award. So the remaining $93,000 if they were awarded 100K. So I, I think that is important to note that direct staff time spent on directly administering the projects or activities that they're awarded can be applied to that award. So there is that, that cap there. The other piece that I would add is we are committed to releasing in the coming months another competitive request for proposals for resource identification. This activity is going to support us completing a needs assessment, do some strategic planning, look across our entire five-county eligible metropolitan statistical area, which is comprised of Durham County, Person County, Granville County, Orange County, and... Oh, gosh. Apologize, I'm missing one off the top of my head. I, I will circle back with that, that remaining county. But that proposal will support identification of resources throughout that entire EMSA and will involve engagement and consultation with existing HIV and AIDS providers throughout the entire EMSA. So we do encourage when, one, we release that request for proposals that the, the coalition and, and other vested stakeholders attend pre-submitting meetings about it. We are looking for a consultant to help us do that work, a third-party entity given the five-county service area for HOPA. But then thereafter, it is our expectation of that consultant to facilitate this engagement with existing providers because we do recognize a need to develop a continuum that services this entire area.
Thank you. So helpful. So to the first request that's currently out, I know in the past when we've talked about money that comes from federal sources, that there are higher barriers for community folks to access that. Do we have, have we worked with anyone in the community to ensure? I know we've been, had trouble in the past finding folks to do some of this work, as evidenced by the fact that we had some door closing and some HOPA chaos earlier this year. So have we, are there ways that folks can work with the city to make them eligible? Are there higher barriers? Are we addressing those in any way? Does this question make sense to you?
It does, yes, Councilmember Cook. So as far as the RFP release, it is the, the current one that is out and available and accepting proposals. It, it was developed just based on how we've currently allocated funding and identified funding priorities in the annual action plans that comprise that 1.3 million. So that's fiscal years 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025. The way that the HOPA program is kind of set up in eligible activities, resource identification is really the, the best place and space for us to help explore capacity building. And that is part of the reason for us reallocating resource identification funding to the City of Durham because we hope to sustain the work that is identified by the consultant. We recognize that serving a five-county EMSA takes a lot of administrative coordination. And we want to ensure that the strategic plan goals that are outlined through that body of work can be carried out. So I, I don't know if I directly answered your question. The capacity building, HOPA doesn't have a comparable eligible activity or eligible funding stream to support that work. But I think resource identification is the, the most appropriate and the most flexible way for us to help support that effort.
Yeah, I understand. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking back to the things that Dr. Cunningham brought up as, as some of the issues. And, and several of them, the reimbursement model and the money set aside for administration, and, and then the 7% cap that you were just talking about, does feel like it makes it restrictive for folks doing the work in the community to actually access this and work with them, work with, work with those federal funds outside of the capacity building part of HOPA that you just talked about. And I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a creative solution there because I'm just, I'm feeling like the community is frustrated. And I feel like I also, as a person who like has worked in this space, has been frustrated with, and I think that there are federal restrictions, but with these barriers that are sort of set up that we end up with the federal money not in the hands of the community that's doing the work. And we end up with larger organizations that are already sort of set up for some of this process that maybe like don't do it with the care and, yeah, detail-oriented, I think that would happen from community workers, so.
And I, I think to that, Councilmember Cook, we'd have to leverage other funding sources just because HOPA, like you shared, it, it has restrictions. HUD dictates to us what is and isn't eligible. The, the Code of Federal Regulations for this funding source says what that looks like. But I, I do think resource identification is going to be our best way to help meet some of those capacity challenges through the, the goals and outcomes that will be established for that body of work, particularly that, that forming of a continuum of care operating kind of synonymously with the homeless services continuum of care that exists. We're going to build upon that model to try and create this, this five-county network.
But the, the RFP that's already out is, this is the three-year cycle that's going to end. And so we're, we're not addressing it for this, we're not going to be able to address it for this cycle.
That is correct. That is correct. But I, I will share, you know, we have to evaluate what, what proposals look like when they come in and if folks are able to demonstrate they have capacity or, or do not. And then that may prioritize that, that resource identification RFP and, and support that body of work. Like I said, we do have a three-year period of performance, and we are able, as an entitlement jurisdiction, to ask for a one-to-two-year extension to that period of performance. So there is time with this funding that we've released competitively in the current RFP that's open.
Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First of all, I just want to echo Councilmember Cook and thank the community members. You have done an incredible amount of work to help us understand some of the challenges with HOPA. I know you've sent us emails over the last several months. So we've read all those and really appreciate your input and your dedicated work on this and holding us accountable, us and staff accountable. So thank you so much for that. Councilmember Cook asked a number of questions, I think, that came up in your presentation. The one, I think, that wasn't addressed was the question about the goals outcome indicators in the Consolidated Plan. Can you respond to that, to the, the comments shared here?
Absolutely, yes. So the goal outcome indicators, they're prescribed by HUD. There's a set of 23 of them. They are performance measures in HUD speak for all of our entitlement grants. There are specific goal outcome indicators that tie to specific eligible activities. In our current Consolidated Plan, we do not have listed the appropriate goal outcome indicators for the supportive services activity and the permanent housing placement activity. This correction is merely going to ensure that we are appropriately reporting on those services and beneficiaries and accomplishments for those services in a given program year when we have to do year-end reporting in our Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or CAPR. So it is not going to lower standards. It's just going to ensure that we're appropriately reporting for the work that's being done under those activities. Because these, these templates, the, the CAPR and the Consolidated Plan, they're, they're prescribed. And when we go to do reporting, you can only manually enter, report accomplishments and beneficiaries for those specific GOIs that, that were selected at Consolidated Plan time. So this is, again, just to make sure that we can accurately, fully depict how our funds are being spent amongst the activities we currently are funding.
Good, thank you for that. And Ms. Mayor, I also just had one of us, I want to say, as you know, I'm the representative from the City Council to the term Housing Authority. We don't directly fund the Housing Authority, but we certainly have a great interest in the, in the, the health and safety of all the residents who live in public housing in Durham. So really appreciate Mrs. Graves' comments. I'm sorry she's not still here. Those are, those are very heartfelt and, and concerning comments you shared. I will be meeting with the manager tomorrow. We'll take that up tomorrow, Mr. Manager. I'll also be making sure that Anthony Snell at the Housing Authority is aware of her comments and, and ask his staff to follow up on those important issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I will just note that Anthony Snell is also on that email as well. She, she emailed all of, a lot of us. I did want to just ask, in the grand scheme of things, understanding like year over year, I think Ms. Hinton and a couple of others in this coalition have made these types of requests in the past. Has there ever been a budgeted request in, or coming from Community Development around making sure that support is in place? Even though, because I noted you, you said that there was no eligible line item. was no eligible line item. So you, it seems like you understand that there's a need, but there's no, I'm assuming, let me not assume, let me just ask the question.
Yes, Councilmember Freeman. So we do foresee as a, as part of that next competitive RFP for the resource identification that there are going to be needs that emerge that we are not aware of, just transparently. So we need to take that strategic planning effort and then figure out, do we need to leverage local funds to meet the gaps that aren't being fulfilled? And we have not completed a strategic plan body of work specific to HOPWA since 2019. So it is due time that this funding source does have that focus and effort. So we can make assumptions about what we perceive the needs are, but we do want to make sure we're engaging providers like the coalition to ensure that what we as staff perceive the issues are, are actually what service providers are experiencing.
I would strongly encourage you to include the coalition in that conversation and then also the tenant associations around the housing authorities and some of the low-income housing sites. Because what may get missed, because I didn't hear it this evening, but I do know that some of the seniors with HIV are also in some of those other sites around our city where we've been talking about things like elevators. Those things are, they're not on the face of it, you know, relevant, but they are relevant. And so I just want to make sure we don't miss it.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I also wanted to add, our five-county eligible metropolitan statistical area, our EMSA, consists of Durham County, Granville County, Person County, Chatham County, and Orange County. So that is those five counties. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd like to also state that I'm actually already working with Mr. Snell and DHA, and as you all are talking about this, Councilmember, risk tomorrow, maybe you and I can chat briefly after the meeting just on, they gave me the entire process and what's happening with the evictions process, and I don't want that conversation to just be just thrown out there without context. There, it's a very complex matter, very complex, and I can say no one has just been thrown out. But if, you know, residents feel that way, then that means there needs to be some communication. But there are a lot of moving parts and many variables to this matter, and it's not making the news right now, and it's not being talked about as much as some other things, but there's a lot of work that's been done around it.
Yeah, I look forward to talking more about that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, colleagues? Yeah, go ahead.
This is not for y'all. You're good. But just to follow up on that, that I'm in the courthouse every day seeing the results of those eviction filings, and I do just want to acknowledge that that is very real. We're seeing a lot, a lot of evictions. We're seeing a lot of moving forward with padlocking, and it does feel like some of the conversations around that are not reflecting the actual impacts that that's having on the community. And so that is something I just want to give voice to. I read and really appreciated Ms. Graves coming up today and read her email as well, and I am seeing that on a regular basis in the courthouse in a way that I just don't feel like is reflected into the community. So just want to, just want to acknowledge that. It is a really serious issue when we start seeing evictions from our low-income housing because these folks do not have anywhere to go. This is the last safety net for them. And there, of course, are, like the mayor said, broader issues that are impacting that in terms of federal funding and other issues that are ongoing, but just acknowledging that that is a really, really serious crisis, and a lot of the people who are at risk are folks on fixed income, they're folks with disabilities, and so it really ties into this conversation that we're having tonight.
Thank you. Again, this is a very complex matter, and the reason why it says complex is because what Councilmember Cook just said, it's very real. The other side of it is, there's some communication that's needed, there are some rents that have not been paid since the pandemic, and there are a lot, it's a matter of case by case. So I don't want us to litigate this conversation here on the dais tonight because it's extremely, extremely complex, and I don't want the city to be faced as one side of the story. So we're going to move on, and I'm going to...
If I just could, I do want to say, so this is, and Councilmember Cook and I have talked about this many times, is an issue that we, on a monthly basis, at the Housing Authority on the board, take very seriously, this issue of lease enforcement that goes back to before COVID. And we recognize that the families who live in public housing are very vulnerable, among our most vulnerable residents. There have been six evictions this year from Durham Housing Authority. We saw those reports at our last meeting, so it's a serious issue that we take, as you said, quite seriously. It's a complicated issue, and one that, again, I've talked to the manager, I think it's something that we may want to have additional conversations, someone at a work session just so the council has full, full sort of visibility on what's actually happening with the Housing Authority, how their finances are impacted by, by payment rates, repayment rates, and arrears and so forth, and how we're, I mean, the city has already invested some ARPA funds to help cover some of those, what are called tenant accounts receivables, but there's more to address, and so it's something we should have further discussion about. So I look forward to that.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we have closed the public hearing. We've had comments. I'll now entertain a motion. Oh, man, I need to read all of those. Can I just read all of those and just do one, or is it case by case? All right, I will entertain a motion to, I will entertain a motion to approve as printed.
Move to approve as printed in total? Second.
Thank you all for not putting me through that. This is a lot. All right, Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, item 24 was placed through. All right, okay, now we can, let's take a break. Yeah, let's do that. Colleagues, we'll come back at 9:10. We're in recess.
I came to the city for the great insurance and retirement benefits, but I save for stability and vacation time. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the whole city, visit durhamsc.gov/careers.
We, the people.
Nosotros de gente.
Women renmin.
Mi adu ma viu.
Hum sab log. We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self-evident that all men.
And women. Are created equal.
And shall be afforded.
The inalienable right.
To fair housing.
The city of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home. There's no place like home. Home is where the heart is.
Hey, can I help you?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
It is our place of safety and warmth. Home is where love resides, memories are created, and laughter warms the heart. That's why the Durham Human Relations Division is committed to enforcing the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits unlawful discrimination based on race, color, disability, religion, sex, familial status, or national origin.
Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle-income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
Owning a home provides a sense of financial stability, family, community, and pride. But housing prices are now higher than ever, making it hard for many Durham residents to afford their first home. That's why the city of Durham is offering the Down Payment Assistance Program to support eligible individuals with up to $80,000 in 0% interest forgivable loans to purchase a house within the city limits. Visit this site or call to find out if you qualify for the program.
Here are some tips to ensure that your garbage and recycling gets picked up. One, your carts should be put out for collection before 6:00 a.m. on your collection day. Two, your carts should be at least three feet from all other objects such as mailboxes, telephone poles, fire hydrants, trees, and other carts. Three, your carts should be no more than three feet from the curb. Four, no vehicles should be blocking your carts. The mechanical arms on our trucks need direct access to your carts and cannot reach around vehicles. To find more information about garbage and recycling pickups, go to this web address.
Have you noticed more electric cars on the road recently? They are gaining popularity as more models become available and charging infrastructure continues to expand. Let's discuss some basics of electric driving. There are two types of electric vehicles. Battery electric vehicles are powered solely by an electric motor with rechargeable batteries. Plug-in hybrid electric vehicles are powered by a combination of a gasoline engine and an electric motor with rechargeable batteries. Electric vehicles offer drivers multiple benefits, including fuel and maintenance savings, enhanced vehicle performance, a fun driving experience, and environmental friendliness. There are many types of electric vehicles to choose from, and new models continue to enter the market. For your typical passenger vehicles, there are electric sedans, SUVs, and trucks. For medium and heavy-duty vehicles, there are electric vans, buses, tractor trailers, and specialty work trucks. And we can't forget about the two-wheel vehicles. Electric motorcycles and bikes are quickly becoming rider favorites. All of these vehicles get their fuel from the electric grid by plugging in to charge. There are three levels of charging: level one, level two, and DC fast charge. Level one charging uses an adapter to plug into a standard 120-volt outlet, providing around 3 to 5 miles of range per hour. Level two charging uses a 240-volt outlet and provides 12 to 60 miles of range per hour. Level two charging stations can be installed at home and are commonly found in public locations, including shopping centers, downtown communities, multifamily housing, and workplaces. DC fast charge stations provide the quickest charge, adding about 60 to 80 miles of range in 20 minutes. DC fast charging is usually located in high-traffic public spots and along highway corridors. While drivers tend to do most of their charging at home, there are multiple apps and websites to help locate public charging stations. With electric vehicle and charging options growing daily, drivers are zipping around their communities and traveling the country cleanly and quietly, with plenty of places to plug in along the way. to plug in along the way.
All right, at this time, we will proceed to our five development zoning cases. Starting with number 18, Consolidated Annexation Romero Residence. Hurry up before Councilmember Cook is back, and we'll get out of here, you know, within an hour or so.
Well, council members, good evening. I am Peyton Burgess with the Planning Department, and I am happy to be here with you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received by Joshua Jacobo, representing the individual landowner, for one parcel of land totaling 0.64 acres and located at 213 Shear Avenue. This annexation petition is not contiguous to the primary corporate limits. The request would allow for the applicant to connect to City Water and Sewer in order to construct a single-family home. The current zoning is Residential Suburban 20. As part of this annexation petition, the applicant is seeking a zoning change in the underlying zoning district. A direct translational zoning is one in which the existing county zoning is translated to the identical city zoning district upon the annexation of the property into city limits. A translational zoning does not include a development plan, and any future development may proceed according to what the zoning would allow. The properties are currently designated Established Residential on the placetype map. The proposed RS20 zoning is generally consistent with the designated use shown on the placetype map. If the proposed zoning is approved, there will be no change to the placetype designation of Established Residential. As a reminder, council may elect to deny the annexation but approve the utility extension agreement, which would allow for water and sewer connection, but any development would remain in the county. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the staff report. Are there any questions? Noted. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. All right. Is there an applicant available? All right. I don't have any sign-ups, so at this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed back before the council. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Yeah, well, after you said that, no, I have to ask. No, I'm just kidding. Um, I do have a couple of questions. I was kind of hoping to speak with Mr. Jacobo, but I don't, he's not on? He's not accessible? Okay. Yeah, I guess then this will be a staff question. Can you talk about... Um, the... Y'all are waiting for my question to see you to send? That's great. Okay. Okay, yes. I was like, who's coming? Okay, no one's coming. All right. Um, great. So I guess I want to talk about why the annexation as opposed to just the utility agreement. It seems like there is accessible water and sewer. This is not contiguous, so it feels like it's going to be out of the way for, like, emergency response. I looked at the cost-benefit analysis. It wasn't, maybe didn't think, didn't go through all of the things that I'm maybe concerned about, so I was just hoping you could speak a little bit to why annexation and if that's the recommendation even though it's not contiguous.
Sure. Good evening. Sarah Young with the Planning Department. So this is one, and you'll notice that at the end of Peyton's script, she put a plug in there that that was definitely an option to approve the utility extension agreement but not annex. This does not fall into one of the explicit exemptions, but it does fall into one of the categories where the council has the leeway to excuse the annexation but still offer utilities. And so when that is the case, the method for someone to ask is still the same under city code. They have to request annexation, but it is you all's decision as to whether to annex or simply provide the utilities, and when that is the case, we provide that as the alternative.
Colleagues, I listened to the applicant during, when he spoke at the Planning Commission, and it sounded like there was some confusion when he bought the property five years ago. There was maybe some subdivision going on, and then the seller died midway through the sale, and the subdivision did not occur as they planned. The applicant has actually already sold the property and is planning to do the build for the next, or the construction, or, sorry, the contracting work for the next owner, but without the connection to utilities, has found that the lot itself is just not big enough to host a well and a septic system. To me, being that it's not contiguous and therefore not consistent with a comprehensive plan, I personally feel more comfortable with just a utility agreement in this matter. I didn't hear any reason for the annexation to occur, and it's not super far out, but it certainly is far off our current city limits, so it would be, I would be making that request tonight that I would feel more comfortable with just a utility agreement.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at the map, it is not, not super easily accessible by a street or by a public right-of-way to areas that are within the city. And so annexation would mean that this single lot on this street would have access to city services, and I'm not sure that that is a very good practice. If we were to do that here, to do that in other parts of our city, that is a substantial cost for city vehicles to go out there and deliver, deliver services when it has to go through a sea of the county and go to this little spot on the map that is city. However, it is right next to city sewer, city water, so it does, you know, it does make sense to be able to tap into that. Now, if there were a trend in this area, a trend on the street, or an agreement among all the neighbors to annex all at once, that would be something positive. We had some promise of other neighbors in this area coming forth and also wanting to annex into the city. I think that would, that would make a lot of sense. It is between two portions of the city of Durham, so it's kind of hard, on that end, it's kind of hard to say no to somebody annexing into the city. But if it is just this one parcel on this street that doesn't easily connect to other parts of the city, I'm not sure that it makes sense. And as a result, I'm leaning toward what Councilmember Cook just suggested in, in moving forward the utility extension without annexing into the city. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. I think some really important observations. I think the observations that I made, this is always the case with small, individual, private citizens like this. I mean, we've done a lot of these over the years, and I kind of jokingly always ask the applicant, are you a multimillion-dollar developer or multinational corporation? The answer is usually, no. From the way I, I want to annex him because I want the taxes. I mean, if we're going to give him the water and the sewer, I think oftentimes folk, kind of in an anticipatory way, like the woman who was before us at the last meeting who wanted to kind of build wealth for her family, look at the area and anticipate what may happen. And I give a lot of leeway to just, and I don't mean this in a pejorative sense, regular individuals and citizens who are not multinational corporations, who are not multimillion developers, that we, you know, ask for a lot: environmental concerns, affordable housing. And I always, you know, try and caution myself about appearing capricious, because we routinely, when it's a resident who's asking for a direct translation, who's just a small individual, you know, looking to build a single-family home, who wants to be part of the city, I think the, the, the argument about, not the argument, the observation about donut holes and having to provide service is accurate, but that is always the case. And if that argument carries this particular case, then anytime a small individual homeowner or landowner wants to get water or sewer and annex into the city, I mean, for me, for the sake of intellectual honesty, what do I say the next time? And we will get another case like this. We get them all the time. Are we saying that if you're not contiguous and you're a small, private citizen, or citizen with a, a, a private citizen with a small acreage holding, that from here on out, you know, we'll do utility and water, a sewer, if it's convenient, but not annex you into the, into the city? For me, the benefit is the additional tax. Yeah, we provide services, but it's the tax revenue that comes along with annexation in addition to just providing a utility. But I just want to caution that if we do this in this case, the question will come up in the future, the next time we have one of these, and we will, you know, a citizen who just wants to get, and say, are we going to say, if you're not contiguous, or because we have to send fire and police, we're not, we're just going to offer you utility as opposed to annexing you as well? So I, with these, I usually just vote as is, but I find the observations compelling, but if they're compelling, but they're also precedent-setting, or at least will be perceived by the public, I think is precedent-setting the next time we have a case like this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There we go. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the dialogue, and I know we take seriously these cases where it's not contiguous with the city limits. I do have a question for staff. So as I understand, the, and obviously, there's no city participation in this, right? This is, this is the cost on the landowner to, like, hook up, right? And the, if I understand, the water and/or sewer runs along Shear Road, right? Which is where the property is located?
Yes. So Attachment E, the utility map, shows city sewer and city water, both in Shear.
So, I mean, in your, from your professional judgment, what's, are we expecting most of the lots along Shear at some point to ask for annexation?
I don't know that that will be the case. I think that this is a situation where that water line is there to create a loop as part of the water system to have it function properly. So I don't know that there was ever, I don't know that there would be enough consensus among all those folks to voluntarily seek annexation.
But they, but they may, or they, yeah. Yeah, and as I understand, so we have a, we have a carve-out for sing, like, one or two homes that aren't, that can't be served by septic and well, that if they request, even though they're outside the limits, we have a carve-out for that, right? That we, that we may do that. That's, that's part of what we typically do, right?
There are a number of carve-outs, as you all heard the water-sewer amendment earlier. One of the items that was not listed earlier because it didn't change is item number nine in that same section, and that is what says, "City Council in its sole discretion may excuse the annexation requirement when the annexation of property pursuant to an annexation petition would create an enclave where the property is not contiguous to the city's corporate limits, and one or both of the following findings are made." The first finding is that it is not revenue-positive, and the second is that there would be some service, negative service impact.
So that's the case where...
So you all would be determining that because this is not contiguous and there is a negative service impact, you know, having to serve this singular property on a street that otherwise is receiving no city services, you all could then, under that provision, that number nine, could excuse the annexation and only approve the utility extension agreement? And then they would pay double water-sewer rates.
Thank you.
And of course, a lot of this is that the state took away our power to, for city-initiated annexations, and that makes all of this so much more challenging, is we have to sit here and anticipate whether all of these parcels would consider annexing into the city voluntarily. On the one hand, to, to the Mayor Protem's point, I mean, you know, we don't necessarily, if everyone along the road saw their neighbor tap into the water and the sewer, and they got those services without, without annexing into the city, you know, that could cause a cascading effect where each neighbor taps in without annexing the city, and then we lose out on that. And to the Mayor Protem's point, you know, we lose out on that side of the ledger, right? And that would be a situation where, because of its location close to municipal boundaries, it would make sense, it would make sense to provide city, city services. However, if just one parcel, and if we see this all over the city, just one parcel, and this one is unique, this one is unique compared to anything that I have seen up here, were to annex in, I mean, and to staff question here, if, if this is annexed into the city, would they get solid waste service? Would, would they be able to put their trash out and get, get pickup? So the truck would have to drive all the way out there, drive all the way up Shear, go to this one parcel, pick up the trash, and drive all the way down? That is so inefficient. So when we're thinking about, yes, we get some additional tax base, but the other side of the ledger is providing the services is that much more expensive that you're actually losing out. And so, again, I mean, there's, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place on this one because of the state's taking away local, local government ability to initiate annexations. So I'm wrestling with this one a lot. I'm thinking a lot about the Mayor Protem's comments. I suppose I am still leaning toward utility extension, but I would love to hear if other colleagues have additional thoughts.
Quick question. I have a stupid question. So what happens if the, if the house next door catches on fire?
If the house in the county catches on fire?
Yeah.
So they call 911, and 911 dispatches it, and whoever is closest and able to attend to the fire would attend to the fire.
I can elaborate on that, just to say that the fire service through, through...
That's my point. We're merged.
First available. Well, not, not all, I mean, there are still volunteer services in the county, but it's always going to be first available, or closest available unit because of mutual aid agreements.
Right. So my point is, this is the archaic part of government that I just don't understand. And I noticed this when I sat in 911, and someone called in with a life-threatening emergency, and after spending about 45 seconds explaining what's going on, the operator said, "Please hold, and let me send you to Chapel Hill," and then they had to explain it all over again. And at some point, when do you just send the damn truck? You know, and, and so I don't, I think this is a, I don't know where we are tonight, but I think this is an area where we truly have to do better with government. We're sitting here talking about whose fire truck or whose EMS is going to respond to a 911 call, whether it's this house or the one next to it, and it just doesn't make logical sense to me. So I, maybe I'm... Okay. I don't think it's as complicated as it appears, but actually, Councilmember Caballero, then I'll come back over to Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'm leaning just towards utility extension and annexation because that's
Yeah, I'm leaning just towards utility extension and annexation because that's kind of how we've done it. And so I'm going to continue on that pattern. I do want to speak to the forced annexation, and part of the reason it got stripped is because municipalities went kind of crazy with their power about forced annexations. And so, I mean, that's what happens when you have a state general assembly that has strong preemption and municipalities misbehave, they're going to take the power. So I think it's also just a good example of understanding where your power and where your limitations of your power are and what lever of government you sit. I certainly remember being forcefully annexed when I lived in Mecklenburg County. We were not part of Charlotte, and we got a letter and our taxes went up. And yeah, we got water and trash, but the residents in that community didn't really want to be annexed. So I think it cuts both ways. Anyway, I will be voting for both annexation and utility extension since colleagues have asked. Thank you.
Part of this inspiration came out of Durham folks. They use us as an example a lot. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate my colleague's comments. If life and property are in peril, we will deploy. I mean, plain and simple, whether we're getting tagged, we're not going to let people die, and we're not going to let property burn out, so we will deploy. And we should. And I appreciate Councilmember Baker's, I really do, point. And I appreciate Councilmember Cook's point as well. I really kind of, to kind of further complicate matters, I would like to hear from the applicant because maybe the applicant may not want utilities apart from annexation. I mean, I'm speculating, I'd kind of like to hear if they heard that, what were they thinking? What was their desire? What, sorry? What, their rationale for annexation? I mean, we can speculate and put words to them, but particularly since, again, this is not a developer represented by a team of attorneys, this appears to be a small level, smaller in terms of development, small lot, single-family home. This doesn't feel like a big multinational, the type of interest that we reserve, you know, a higher level of scrutiny for and a higher level of, you know, investigation for. I would just hate the burden, you know, regular resident by not first hearing them. So I'm prepared to vote, as Councilmember Caballero said, for utility and annexation. But if we were going to split it up, then I would want to hear, I would rather wait to hear from the applicant. I don't know why they couldn't be here tonight, but I imagine, you know, they have a reason. So I would rather just wait and hear from them for my own benefit. But if we're going to vote tonight, then I support annexation and utility extension. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, colleagues.
Yeah, same here. Yeah, go ahead.
Staff, you've been working with the applicant, I assume. Do you have an answer to that question?
So I know that Mr. Jacobo, who is the one pursuing the annexation, is not going to be the one actually living at that physical address. He is representing the individual landowner who will eventually build a home and live there. So I don't actually know if he could speak one way or the other to whether or not the future landowner would want those utilities.
You have other questions?
I'll just say that I wasn't going to die on this hill. It was because the way that he was speaking did not, there was no request at the Planning Commission for any of the other services. It really was like, he was like, "The plot is too small for me to have septic, and so I just like cannot construct what I need to construct." So that was the only reason. And me looking at this cost-benefit analysis, I don't, I just don't see that there's like a huge benefit in tax money to then, and to your point, Mayor Protam, like, I imagine probably if there's a fire, we already are going out there because that is how we have worked with the county, and there's a volunteer firefighter, there's been somewhat of a merger, not exactly, but we do tend to go outside of the city range and we're going to put that fire out anyway. So for me, it's not like the emergency response, which already exists. It's like the day-to-day thing, like the going out every week and collecting trash, going out every Friday and collecting yard waste. That is the stuff that I'm thinking of when I'm talking about the cost-benefit. But again, that's why I asked for him at the beginning, because I wanted to follow up on that question. I'm not like super attached. I just, to me, doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like a good, it doesn't seem like a big add to the city in terms of what we're going to spend, but I think it's also very small, so.
All right. Last question, promise, to staff. And you may not have the answer to this question, but do you have any idea if other properties along that street are tapped into the water or the sewer? Or do you think they might? And the reason why I ask that question is, would they potentially see their neighbor annexing into the city, see the benefits, and then also want to annex into the city?
So we don't know that for a fact, but Peyton just confirmed that Public Works did not raise that as an issue when they did their review, that there were other similarly situated properties.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, again, excellent points from my colleague, and I think Councilmember Cook is spot-on. Incrementally, on a case-by-case, this isn't going to be a huge impact to our tax base, but they add up over time as you string these cases together. And again, I'm being very transparent. You know, we get to make choices as a government sometimes to help our people. And I just tend to, you know, when these cases come before us, we do so much for big multinational corp, so much, that every once in a while, when a citizen comes along who, they just want to build a house, it may not accrue to us immediately a windfall, but I think there are some other ways in which it accrues to us as a city. And again, I'm being very transparent. For me, this is just really about a private citizen who wants some help. So that's where I'm coming from. But there's no refute to the economic argument, say, that it's math is math, but there's just a little more involved here for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I think just because I haven't said anything, I'll just note that because we have been doing this in the past and understanding the general legislature's stance, we won't have the opportunity to come back and annex if we don't tonight, so I'm going to lean towards the annexation.
All right. Well, look at us coming together on something. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Romero Residence into the City of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Jorge Jacobo Romero and Guadalupe Lopez Harrez.
So moved. Wood is read. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. And I'll also entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the Residential Suburban 20 Falls Jordan Lake District B Watershed Overlay County Jurisdiction and establishing the same as Residential Suburban 20 Falls Jordan Lake District B Watershed Overlay City Jurisdiction. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote. All right.
And the motion passes six to one with Councilmember Cook voting no.
Thank you. And motion three, to, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605.
To adopt consistency. Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Item number 19, Consolidated Item Page Miami Design District.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kayla Seibel.
You can also adjust that so you can be comfortable. The mic.
Okay. Usually there's a sign that says, "Don't touch this."
You're good.
Start over. Good evening. My name is Kayla Seibel, Senior Planner at the Planning Department. I'm here to summarize the Page Miami Design District Consolidated Item. The Durham City County Planning Department has prepared a zoning map change for the Page Miami Design District. This is an area southeast of Research Triangle Park between Highway 54, Davis Drive, Hopson Road, Page Road, and South Miami Boulevard. Since this proposal is a staff-initiated rezoning, the city is the applicant in this case. For background, staff was asked by members of the Joint City-City Planning Committee to take on this effort in advance of the new UDO. We follow the same procedure as the typical rezonings that you hear. The purpose of this new zoning is to encourage transit-oriented development, support future publicly-funded multimodal projects like bus rapid transit, passenger rail, or bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and promote equitable development using the Affordable Housing Density bonus. So due to new state legislation, which is exerted in Attachment J, staff requested consent from property owners in the project area to change the zoning. This rezoning proposal presented to you today is not as comprehensive as originally planned, which is what the Planning Commission reviewed in October. And right now, it encompasses over 25 acres, as staff was unable to gain consent from all property owners in the project area. However, the folks who have opted in, are interested in the rezoning, have projects in process, or would soon have the opportunity to pursue their projects. Specifically, the requested changes are shown in your contacts maps, Attachment D showing five clusters of rezonings, from Commercial General and Light Industrial to Compact Suburban Design District Core, Office and Institutional to Residential Urban Multifamily, and Commercial Neighborhood with a text development plan, as well as Rural Residential to Compact Suburban Design District Support 1. Finally, staff proposes place-type map amendments and a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment TC 240002 concurrently with the rezoning. So with that summary, I am happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. This is a question for staff. So I know that we are like individually approaching property owners because of changes at the General Assembly, and so because it was a smaller area, we were able to do that. Would folks be able, like, maybe they missed their window, but they do want to opt in later? Are they going to be able to do that?
Great question. So the plan is that the new UDO with the updated zoning map will pull in the rest of those properties.
That's great. I just want to say thank you to all the staff who worked on this. This did come from JCCPC. This is exciting. This is what we want to see. There's a lot of transit opportunities in this area, which is why we asked for it. So a good day in Durham.
Likewise, no. I love the proactive sort of element of this on this part of staff. Really appreciate that, sort of leveraging the density bonus to increase density and affordable housing, and the robust community engagement. Y'all have done a great job. So yeah, it's exciting. Thank you.
Echo my colleagues up here. The more property we can put into zoning districts like this, the better, the more pedestrian and transit-oriented we can be as a city moving forward. And hopefully, we can look back in the future at this as a positive case study for retrofitting suburbia and slowly evolving an area that is super, super auto-oriented to one that is a little bit less and provides additional ways of realistically and safely getting around. And I appreciate you also clarifying to Councilmember Caballero's question how things will evolve in the rest of this defined area. So thanks again for the great work, and I'll look forward to voting yes on this item.
Did we open the public hearing? I think there's a speaker.
Well, we're still in the House of Counsel. I haven't opened it yet.
Okay, just...
All right. At this time, I will declare this public hearing open. And we have the applicant here. Mr. Jewell, how much time do you think you need?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not the applicant. The city is the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you're right. The city is the applicant.
I have prepared remarks, but I can read the tea leaves and know that sometimes the best thing you can say is nothing. So please do well. This is a great proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, city, we are the applicant. Anything you want to say in close, I mean, not close session, in the public hearing? This is great.
My three minutes.
All right. Ooh, I could actually limit three minutes to Councilmember Cook on this. All right, cool. All right. No other comments. At this time, I'll declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. All right. No other comments? All right. I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, incorporating revisions to Article 11 Sign Standards and Article 16 Design Districts.
Wood is read. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. And secondly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement. Hold on, one second. All right. Secondly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605 for TC 240002.
Move to adopt consistency. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote. All right.
Motion passes unanimously.
And, oh, Jesus. Okay. I didn't see that. And motion three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of Commercial General with the Development Plan CGD, Industrial Light with the Development Plan ILD, Office and Institutional with the Development Plan OID, and Residential Rural RR zoning districts and establishing the same as Compact Suburban Design Core CSDC, Compact Suburban Design Support 1, CSDS1, Residential Urban Multifamily RUM, and Commercial Neighborhood with a Development Plan CND.
Wood is read. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. That motion, just, please close.
The motion passes unanimously.
This motion is why I didn't go to planning school. This is crazy. It's like learning police codes. Motion four, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-60 for Z2400018.
Move to adopt consistency. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
And lastly, motion five, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution amending the Durham Comfortance Plan by taking property out of the Transit Opportunity Area Place Type and establishing the same as mixed-use neighborhood place types.
Wood is read. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. All right. Item 20, TC 240003, a privately-initiated Unified Development Ordinance UDO text amendment. Ready to hear from staff. The cool new haircut.
Thank you. Did that myself. Good evening. My name is Robin Schultz with the Planning Department. I'm here to present on TC 240003, which is a privately-initiated text amendment. This text amendment seeks to amend Section 3.26 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which governs statutory development agreements. So statutory development agreements are entered into between the city or county and an applicant. These agreements are intended to provide flexibility outside of traditional zoning practices. So this text amendment is specifically seeking to provide additional flexibility...
So this text amendment is specifically seeking to provide additional flexibility within those agreements by allowing alterations within UDO Section 8.3, which is the tree coverage and tree protection, to be included as part of those agreements. Note, the statutory development agreements are legislative decisions and are subject to a public hearing. Each agreement would be subject to discretion of the appropriate governing body. Lastly, this request is concurrent with Case Z2400027, Page Corners, which is a zoning map change with an associated statutory development agreement. These requests are interdependent, but this request is coming before you first because the Page Corners project cannot be approved unless this text amendment is approved or major amendments to the projects are proposed. Both staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. You've heard from staff. Any questions for staff? All right. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of the city council.
How much time do you think you need?
Sorry? Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes. Five minutes. Thank you. Welcome.
Patrick Byker, I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and along with Tim Seivers, the president of Cunyty, I'm here tonight representing Lincoln Avenue Communities. Mr. Brian Maloney with Lincoln Avenue is here with us as well. We are here in support of this text amendment, which in turn supports your next agenda item by creating greater flexibility for the use of development agreements in Durham. The next agenda item relates to Page Corners, a 160-unit apartment development that will be 100% affordable to persons earning up to 60% of our area median income. To that end, the city council will consider this evening what will be the third development agreement in the history of Durham if we are fortunate enough to receive your approval. In regard to this agenda item relating to this text amendment, UDO Section 3.26.6.B.3 states, quote, "A development agreement shall not reduce environmental requirements within Article 4 zoning districts and Article 8 environmental protection," unquote. For the first two development agreements, this limitation was not an issue. The first development agreement that the city council approved unanimously on October 19 of 2020 was to support a low-income housing tax credit-funded 82-unit apartment complex on Crescent Drive in southwest Durham in the compact neighborhood tier. About two and a half years later, on March 20 of 2023, the city council unanimously approved the second development agreement so that a market-rate apartment development on Chapel Hill Boulevard would provide the gap financing for 66 low-income housing-funded apartments in Bragtown, low-income housing tax credit-funded apartments. Those 66 apartments are within a mixed-income development in Bragtown containing 134 acres. Now this evening, slightly more than two years after the second development agreement, our proposed text amendment is necessary to address smaller sites in the suburban tier, which I think represent the majority of the potential sites for affordable housing in Durham. Our proposed text amendment states, quote, "A development agreement shall not reduce environmental requirements within Article 4 zoning districts and Article 8 environmental protection with the exception of Section 8.3, tree protection and tree coverage," unquote. We hope the city council will approve this text amendment since it will support affordable housing for smaller infill sites in the suburban tier. In closing, I want to thank the planning director, Sarah Young, and our point person, Robin Schultz, for their assistance with this application. Tim and I will be happy to try and answer any questions you may have about this text amendment. We ask for your support, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. So all the speakers I have, so at this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Back before the council. Colleagues, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Just a question. Can you please, I'm struggling, just help me explain how this removing the tree coverage would support affordable housing?
It's because the tree coverage standards vary so much from the urban tier and the compact neighborhood tier, which is only 7%, to the suburban tier, which is 20%. So the previous development agreements, well, the first one, that I hope you remember, on Crescent Drive back in 2019 or 2020, since that was in the compact neighborhood tier, this issue wasn't a problem because it was only a 7% requirement. If we were in the compact neighborhood tier, as we just approved, a mile further south on Page Road, similarly, we wouldn't need this text amendment. But because you're in the suburban tier, and there's such a big jump from 7% to 20%, that there needs to be flexibility to allow for modification of that in order to promote the 4% low-income housing tax credit developments.
So explain why it doesn't say would decrease from 23% to 7%?
It's to just make it flexible. So it could be 7%, it could be 8%, it could be 9%. It would just depend on each site. So we didn't want to limit it to a specific number. It's just to create flexibility so the council can consider that in the context of the overall affordable housing project.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I think I understand this, but I want to make sure that I am following. So the number could be whatever is presented every single time that development agreement has to be approved by council. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. This is just changing so that a statutory development agreement, whenever it comes before you, you have the opportunity to change that percentage. It doesn't lock it in at 7% for every statutory development agreement. It just allows you to change the percentage at all through that process, which you can't currently do.
So could any development access this request?
Only those which go through a statutory development agreement, which have a neighborhood meeting and a public hearing, and come before either you or the Board of County Commissioners.
But are the ones that we see could?
If it goes through this specific process, not like a rezoning.
Can you explain why you can't leave 20% of the trees?
If you would defer that question to the next agenda item, I'll be very happy to go into it in breathtaking detail.
Well, I mean, it's gonna, I have to vote on this one first.
Okay, it's because there are stormwater control measures, there are right-of-way dedications, and there's mandatory parking that's mandated by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And so when you add up the parking, the summer control measures, the apartment building footprints, the amenities, all those facets of the development that are essentially locked in by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, there is not 20% of the site left over.
This might be another staff question. When we get to the next vote on Page Corners, is that what it's called? Do we take up the percentage again?
So this is just, so the text amendment is whether or not you...
Can take it up in the future.
Yeah, exactly.
And then the request will be made for the 7% as opposed to the 20%.
Right, as part of that agreement. So then you can then make your negotiation at that point, or ask those for their questions about that specific percentage.
Thank you.
On its surface, it gives me a slight heartburn, but, I mean, this is a development agreement. We'd love developers to come forward with development agreements. Nothing changes by right in the underlying zoning. I mean, I think you've sort of laid out many of the issues. So I am comfortable with this. I'm going to be voting yes on it and encouraging developers to use the development agreement. Thank you.
This is a question for staff. So this only changes our current UDO. What's the plan if it is approved with the UDO? Would we carry this forward? Is that the plan if it is approved?
Absolutely, yeah. I think that, given that this is so close, fingers crossed, to adoption of the new UDO, that we would take this as a sign from you all that this is a tool that you would like in the toolbox, so we would continue to carry it over unless we heard otherwise throughout the rewrite process. But given that, hopefully, we will be adopting sometime in the not-so-distant future, I think we would try to take, right, yep.
Thank you.
Got a question? I was gonna call the question, unless you have a...
Yeah, I look forward to supporting this. I'm glad to see that we are flexible on tree coverage and tree protection for the things that are important to us. I think it's interesting, you know, to note that what we're codifying through statutory development, statutorily a development agreement, we're codifying some flexibility. I think it's an interesting juxtaposition on the cases that we've had before us where, without a statutory agreement, developers would have been compelled to meet all of the UDO requirements, still give us some affordable housing units, and in some cases, millions of dollars for infrastructure. So I hope that we won't, you know, kind of anesthetize ourselves sometimes, and sometimes some of the stuff we're getting in development agreements, we have to make sure that what we're codifying in the development agreement far exceeds some of the things that have been placed before us by proffer, by developers. With those proffers, and still keeping all of the tree protection and tree coverage by virtue of the UDO, and still giving money, still giving affordable units, and still, in some cases, providing infrastructure. I don't know what this next Page Corner is going to do anything about infrastructure, but I do think it's important that we keep in mind, keep intention, some of the stuff that we're getting with tree coverage and tree protection by proffer, as opposed to kind of the attraction of a statutory agreement, a statutory development agreement. But we need to hold those, you know, intention with the entire universe of things that are coming before us. But I look forward to supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate the comments. All right. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, incorporating revisions to Article 3, applications and permits.
Move to red.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll also entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by the North Carolina General Statute, Section 160-605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Item number 21, consolidated annexation, Page Corners.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and honorable councilmembers. Good evening, Mandy Lester with the Planning Department, and it's good to be with you all tonight. I'm here to present Z240027, BDD24012, Page Corners. This is a request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, initial zoning map change, and statutory development agreement has been received from Tim Seivers of Cunyty for two parcels of land totaling 7.602 acres and located at 4004 and 4110 Page Road. The annexation petition is for contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The current zoning is residential rural and commercial center. The applicant proposes to change this designation to Planned Development Residential 22.456 with a textual development plan. The textual development plan associated with this request proposes a maximum of 160 multifamily apartment dwelling units through a committed statutory development agreement whereby 100% of those 160 dwelling units would become restricted for households at 60% AMI or less for a 30-year affordability tenure. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D, Article 10, a municipality may enter into a development agreement with an entity for the development of property through the adoption of an ordinance by the governing body. A public hearing held by the governing body for the development agreement is required prior to acting on the development agreement. Under the terms of the proposed development agreement, Page Road Apartments LP will receive reductions in Unified Development Ordinance minimum requirements for project boundary buffers, open space, and tree coverage, and an increase in allowed fence height. If approved, the city would receive community benefits in the form of 160 income-restricted units, two electric car charging stations, native trees for all new plantings, a maximum of 70% impervious surface area for the site, and at least two recreational amenities. The properties are currently designated neighborhood services in the place type map. The proposed Planned Development Residential 22.456 zoning is inconsistent with the designated place type. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommend a change to the place type map to designate the property as apartment and townhouse neighborhood. Thank you, staff. The applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you so much. You've heard the staff report. Are there any questions? Comments? All right. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Welcome back, Mr. Byker. No, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, guys. I'll declare the public hearing open. All right. How much time do you believe you need?
Probably about six minutes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's put 10 minutes on, please.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of the city council. I'm Patrick Byker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and I'm here tonight representing Lincoln Avenue Communities for this agenda item. I'm joined tonight by Brian Maloney of Lincoln Avenue Communities, which is based in California, and also by Tim Seivers, the president of Cunyty, our land planning and site engineering firm, for this outstanding affordable housing development that is called Page Corners. Page Corners is, in my opinion, a superb infill development that, for the most part, is surrounded by other residential development, with apartments on the north side of Chin Page Road, townhouses on the other side of Page Road, and single-family homes on approximately 1/10 of an acre lots to the west. As you can see on this slide, our net developable area is just over seven acres. Our goal is to build four-story buildings that will contain 160 apartments, all of which, all 160, will be affordable for Durham residents who are at or below 60% of the area median income.
Mr. Byker, you've just spent, are you, were you, did you just allude to a slide? Is there something that's supposed to be on that?
Oh, it's on my screen. Darn.
All right.
I'm just sitting here listening to you.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nice slide.
All right.
Yeah, all right. All right. Just to give you a breakdown on those 160 apartments, 16 will be one bedrooms, 64 will be two bedrooms, 64 will be three bedrooms, and another 16 will be four bedrooms. I also want to emphasize that Page Corners will be financed with a 4% low-income housing tax credit. The Durham Place Type Map designates this acreage as neighborhood service area. Unfortunately, the presence of Briar Creek that is just over a mile away makes commercial development here unlikely to succeed. As the zoning attorney for the over 400-acre Beth Page Development on the north side of Chin Page Road, we had 20 acres at the corner of Page and Chin Page zoned commercial since 2007, and we could not locate any anchor tenants for that site. Likewise, one of the hardest tasks facing affordable housing developers is locating a site and getting it under contract, since affordable developers like Lincoln have to compete with market-rate apartment developers for land to build on. So we are fortunate to have these seven-and-a-half acres under contract, which will allow for the construction of 160 apartments. These apartments will be in four-story buildings that are served by elevators, making these apartments accessible to a wide range of ages and families. I also need to stress that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency typically requires 1.75 parking spaces per apartment, and our team was able to obtain a reduction down to 1.5 parking spaces per apartment. Moreover, it is Lincoln Avenue's practice to provide robust onsite amenities for the residents of these 160 apartments in order to create a sense of place and a sense of belonging for all of Lincoln Avenue's residents. In addition to the zoning map change application, our team has also submitted a development agreement to the Planning Department. North Carolina statutes allow for development agreements since every site is different, and from time to time, there are situations that require certain modifications of the standards in the Durham Unified Development Ordinance. Of course, such modifications of the UDO should be justified based on a development providing strong community benefits. For Page Corners, the community benefit will be 160 apartments that are affordable to families earning 60% or less of the area median income, along with strong onsite amenities for this apartment community. We need to modify the 20% open space down to 15% based on the site constraints, such as required parking and required stormwater control measures. When you start with seven-and-a-half acres, and then you take out the area for the apartment buildings, the parking areas, the amenity areas, and then take out the acreage needed for right-of-way dedication and stormwater control measures, it is not possible to allocate 20% of the just-over-seven-acre site to open space and meet the tree coverage requirements. Accordingly, the four key points of the proposed development agreement are, one, open space. Page Corners will provide 15% rather than the 20% due to the site constraints I just mentioned. Two, in regard... 15% rather than the 20% due to the site constraints I just mentioned. Two, in regards to tree coverage, Page Corners will provide a minimum of 7%, which is the same as the compact neighborhood tier. The council just approved the Page Miami Design District and the compact neighborhood tier is only a mile south on Page Road. In addition, our team recognizes we need to provide as many trees as possible along Sterling Community Association property. Three, we need to increase the fence height from four feet to six feet. And four, we need to remove the unnecessary but required buffer along the AT&amp;T Frontier property line and the mask rating buffer to allow for cost-effective, single-phase buildout of this seven-acre site. To wrap up, Page Corners will be one of the strongest affordable housing developments that has been proposed in the city of Durham, with 160 apartments affordable for Durham residents, making up to 60% of the area median income. Our team recognizes we need to provide as much tree coverage as possible and provide as much buffering as possible along the Sterling Association property to the west. And I want to stress that Lincoln Avenue has a fine track record across our nation. Lincoln Avenue Communities owns over 170 properties containing over 30,500 dwelling units. Lincoln Avenue Communities expects to be the long-term owner of this development and will provide solid onsite management for the new residents, as shown on this slide, if we are fortunate enough to receive approval of the entitlements that I have described this evening. For all these reasons, we respectfully ask for your approval, and our team will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Where have you guys been? All right. I don't have any other speakers. This is 21, right? So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. Colleagues, council member?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions, Attorney Baker. The first is, could you talk about the buffer one more time and just give me a little bit more specifics on that? You said it was unnecessary. I'm just curious how you define that.
Yeah, there is a frontier switching station on Chin Page Road. It's a brick building with no windows and, I believe, no employees, no occupants. There is also a vacant parcel in between the switching station and the Page Corner site. And so therefore, any development, redevelopment of the frontier property, the buffering could be met by the vacant parcel that exists in between the two parcels, between Page Corners and the switching station. And therefore, it's unnecessary for Page Corners to give up property on its side to buffer something that has no occupants and is just a building with brick walls.
There's possibility that that empty lot could be developed at some point.
Right, and then they would have to make, and it's, the UDO contemplates that, then they would have to meet the buffering stations, buffering standards within their parcel, and that's just simply a sequencing.
That burden would shift to that potential development if that, okay.
Although if it developed as residential, it wouldn't need to have a buffer.
Right. Can you talk about the fence height?
Yeah, it's, as you see on this last slide here, Lincoln Avenue Communities has over 170 properties. This is their development standard for their communities. It's simply, I don't know if Brian, it's a security measure. Brian might want to address that. Yeah, sure. Make sure you name an address.
Brian Maloney, Lincoln Avenue Communities, 401 Welsher in Santa Monica, California. So just to address the fence height comment, so the, since this is majority three- and four-bedroom community, it'll be serving larger families, and oftentimes, it's a single-parent, single-parent household where one parent works, and oftentimes, their kids get home from school, and they don't have, you know, mom and dad, mom or dad isn't home yet. And so this, we've expressed it, residents have expressed again and again that they just feel a lot more secure when there is a six-foot fence surrounding the community, so just limits access to the community. They just feel a lot safer that if their kids get home from school and they're not there, they feel safe and secure. And just wanted to say, it's not going to be like an unsightly chain-league fence. It'll be an attractive fence that will look good as well, so.
While you're up there, could you, could you come back? I'm actually curious to know a little, I didn't do any background research because we had a million things on our agenda tonight, but could you talk a little bit about some of the other properties that you own and, or that you all manage, and what that management structure looks like, and if there's, I'm curious about community input in management, like specifically, like folks that are living there having say in management, and just curious if you all have thought about that and what things you all are proud of in your management scheme.
Yeah, I would say, so our, we use exclusively third-party professional management. For this site, we're proposing Franklin Johnson Group. They're based out of Virginia. They're one of the largest affordable housing management companies in the country, and I think we are proud. I think we do a pretty good job of having robust onsite services. We have a dedicated team that is within Lincoln Avenue Communities, not just a management company, that is dedicated, providing services for the residents. So that's their full-time focus. I'm a developer. I focus on development, but those people solely focused on resident services, and I think we do a really good job at it, so.
Thank you. Does Franklin Johnson Group do anything else in North Carolina, or you said they were local to Virginia?
Yes, they manage units within North Carolina. I wouldn't know every single one, but...
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have one more question. This might be for Attorney Baker again. There is not a lot of transit options in the near vicinity. Can you just talk about conversations that you all had around that?
Yeah, it's, there is the regional transit hub there in Imperial Center, which is only about a mile away, so you're right, there's no, the closest transit stop would be over at Chin Page in Miami. Nothing in the immediate vicinity, but there again, that's, what's so attractive about this site is that it's, one, it's infill, but it's also only a mile away from Research Triangle Park and a mile away from Imperial Center, two of our largest employment centers in Durham. And so, if you think about it, it's so much, it's just a tremendous benefit to have this type of housing with a very, very short commute distance to major employment centers. Think about all the people that live in Zebulon and compute to RTP, commute to RTP, or live in Meben and commute to Imperial Center. So it's, no doubt, it's not, you know, I used to be chairman of the Durham Area Transit Authority. I wanted to have a bus stop on every corner, but we, that's not feasible, but I think it could come in the, hopefully come in the near future to this location.
Thank you. Those are actually all my questions.
Can you talk about that, I know you already mentioned in the previous item, but can you revisit and talk a little bit more about going down from the 20% to the 7%?
Yeah, it's, it's, it goes back to that previous slide. Councilmember Baker, if I can make this work. Yeah, there. The challenge is, you've got these non-negotiables. The stormwater control measure is a large, what, 15% of the site? You probably lose 15% of the, I shouldn't say lose. You have to devote 15% of the site to stormwater control. You then have one and a half parking spaces per unit that's mandated by the Housing Finance Agency. Keep in mind, we're not asking for any reduction on the vehicle use area landscaping, so the parking lot will meet UDO standards. In addition to that, you have right-of-way dedication for the multi-use paths along Chin Page and Page Road, and then, of course, you've got the footprints of the buildings. So once that's all done, you get down to about 15% left over for open space. I hope that answered your question.
Does the, does the right-of-way count toward the total area of the site?
Well, we start with seven, about seven-and-a-half acres. We have to dedicate almost half an acre between the two streets, so we lose half an acre ballpark to widening Chin Page and widening Page Road. So it's acreage that Mr. Maloney is purchasing from the current owner that we can't build on.
We couldn't design, we couldn't design it in a way that we'd keep, keep a little bit closer to the 20%?
Mr. Seivers has done outstanding job. We turned in the site plan quite a few weeks ago, so the site plan's already in review. We gave the site plan to many of the neighboring property owners, and, but we got to 15% open space, and we think that's pretty strong.
Okay. Question for staff. Is this using any city subsidy for the affordable housing?
No, I think they are doing the li-tech credits.
Is that, that's, that's pretty uncommon, right?
I would say so.
Yeah.
In conjunction with rezonings, yes.
Yeah, so we're talking about 160 affordable housing units at 60% area median income that's not using any city subsidy. I mean, that is incredibly unique. That's just not something that we see very often. So what a, what a huge asset for something that we deeply need in our community. So there are some things that give me a lot of heartburn about this case and a lot of anxiety, things that, things that I don't like to see. You know, people who live at 60% AMI, they deserve the same amount of open space and trees as everybody else. And, you know, this is just a very auto-oriented area. I mean, there's just not a lot of options with regard to transportation, and 160 units of affordable housing without any city subsidy is something that is pretty remarkable and something that is unique and something with the 4% li-tech as well, something that I think would be hugely beneficial to our, to our residents. So I plan on, I plan on voting for this case, and I appreciate you coming forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question for staff really quickly. How can we make sure to do this with the UDO and not have rezonings so that we can just get it built? So the, the tree save and the open space and all of that, I mean, we just passed a thing that's going to have 7% tree save and compact design all over the city. So I understand the dilemma around open space and tree save, but it's not like there's not other parts of the city that are zoned similarly. So I don't have a lot of heartburn around it. What I'm delighted about is that we didn't have to give a single city penny to a 4%, and we have 160 units that aren't just one or two bedrooms. We have several four bedrooms and three bedrooms, and it's going to be a transit-rich area because we were going to build this kind of stuff, and so the transit's going to actually come. And it's near employment centers, so folks can actually go to Durham Tech, get that recertification, get their housing stabilized, have a good job, and we're moving forward in what we say we always want, which is what are we delivering for Durham residents? And that's what I'm interested in. So I want to make sure that our UDO, if there's trade-offs that we're not spending and we're not asking applicants, how long was this, how long were you all in this process with us?
I have to give credit to the staff. They got us through pretty quickly. Six months?
Perfect. So I want everything like this at six months or less. That's what I want. I want the folks who are delivering these kinds of projects, 160 units. I don't think we've ever approved anything like this since 2018. 160 units without a single city cent for 60% AMI or less near major employment, and I am delighted. I'm not going to, this is like a unicorn. I'm not going to be like, oh, you're giving me an amazing cookie, but it's not exactly the kind of cookie I want. Thank you for this, sorry. Thank you for coming. Thank you for putting time and investment in Durham. I will enthusiastically be saying yes to this, and there's plenty of affluent communities. There's a whole bunch of fore-market stuff on Farrington Road that's on compact design that has, you know, very low, very much lower tree stand, tree cover standards, and we just passed a thing unanimously that's doing the same thing a mile down the road. So again, I will be voting yes, and I look forward to conversations with the UDO to make this kind of thing happen in six months or less and like, let it be, yeah, I will trade, I'm not saying folks don't deserve trees, but I think a lot of, we have to be realistic about what we are asking for, and the 1.5, thank you for fighting the housing, the North Carolina Finance Housing, the 1.5 parking spot, I mean, maybe we could get the open tree, I mean, the open space and the tree coverage if we weren't having to provide 1.5 parking spaces and just one, right? And so I think that's the conversation we need to be having. We're fighting about trees and open spaces here, or open space here. Well, the bigger question is, we need to be having conversations at the state level so that we can lower that parking requirement. I know that there's a bill in front of the General Assembly that might just get rid of parking minimums across the state, yay, and move forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I still have to talk about my cookie. I just, just had a question for staff. What's the, is there an opacity requirement near the other site, the, I think it was Sterling Association community, for the, for the buffer that's on that side?
Yeah, there should be. I think there is some open space that sort of acts as the buffer. There's a cul-de-sac that sort of terminates, and then there, I think there's a buffer and open space for that development.
Do you know what the opacity level would be?
It depends on when it was developed. I need to dig into that for you.
Do you know where the building envelope will be?
I'll defer to the applicant with the site plan that they've submitted to for review.
There'd be a 10-foot buffer approximately on the Page Corner side of the property line, but the Sterling community has about 30 feet, right, Tim? Has about a 30-foot buffer in their owner's association property. So if you take the total, it's actually about 40 feet.
And those will be mature trees, not just the little?
For the most part, not exclusively, but for the most part.
Thank you. Just one additional question. Is there any way possible to get that up from 7% to 11%?
I can't commit to that tonight. I mean, we have our site plan turned in, so it's already pretty much designed along those standards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank you all for this exciting project. Thanks for coming, Mr. Maloney. And I want to connect this to the early discussion about the Page Design District. I know the staff went and actually tried to identify how much affordable housing was in the whole area of the Page Design District, right? I think you counted up maybe like, less than 10 units, right? So there is no affordable housing in this area. You all have built 160 units of affordable housing for 30 years at 60% AMI or below, so that's, that's an important, important contribution to this community. We want to have affordable housing in all parts of the community, and this is helping to solve that in that area. Part of our great challenge here on the City Council and the city is getting from here to there. I get that it's not totally connected to your site, but as you said, you're less than a mile away from that transit-opportunity area. A family with one car then could easily reach the, reach the bus terminal or the, or the transit center there. And so there's ways we can connect people over time to that important TOA area. So this is, I think we're building the city of the future. I hear Councilman Baker, I want to make sure we're not giving away open space and trees and places that are affordable for all families. It's a critical concern. We did have a conversation earlier today about the Neighborhood Services District. I'd love to see some small-scale commercial there, but I, but I, on balance, this is an amazing project, and I think it's, yeah, this is an amazing project. As my colleagues have said, there's no, there's no affordable, there's no city subsidy here. We're building 160 units of affordable housing, so this is great stuff, and I will gladly support this project. Thank you.
Thanks, colleagues. So the 4% li-tech tax rate is pretty hard to get relative to the 9% ones. They're far more competitive. Have you already received a 4%, have you, that already been?
This will be our first project in North Carolina that utilizes the 4% credit for new construction development, but compared to the nine, the 9% is a lot more competitive because it's a higher subsidy level.
I meant, I'm sorry, yeah. Have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I guess, so you're asking if we use 9% credits before?
No, 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 no. You're right. But sometimes we get a little bit of anxiety about projects competing at the 9% level. Have you already been awarded the 4% was my question, if you already?
Our application needs the rezone to be submitted, so this is one of the last pieces that we'll be submitting it in May.
And if you don't get it, what happens to this project?
It dies.
Okay.
But the 4% is, is competitive. It's...
Right, right. But I've seen them. I've, they've been, they're not as competitive, but I've seen some cases where they weren't. But you guys have all your i's dotted and t's crossed and...
I'm losing sleep over that.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm not going to lose sleep over it as well. I look forward to supporting this project. Yeah, I think this is a, to Councilman, Councilmember Caballero's point, something we ought to look for in the future and facilitate as much as possible. The very animus, the animating principle for the development agreements was to put us in a position to kind of bring them forward a little quicker and tailored as well to our values. So exciting project. Thank you very much. I look forward to supporting it. Thank you, colleagues. Excuse me.
All right. Well, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to...
Look forward to doing more work with you guys. All right, there are no more comments. I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Page Corners into the city of Durham effective June 30th, 2025.
Move to read.
Second.
Move the properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll also entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of residential role and commercial center, county jurisdiction, and establishing the same as planned development residential 22456 with the textual, textual development plan, city jurisdiction, and to adopt an ordinance approving a statutory development agreement with an associated utility extension agreement with Page Road Apartments LP and to authorize the city manager to execute both the development agreement and utility extension agreement.
So move.
Then move the properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605.
To move.
Second.
To move the properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you all. Great work. All right, and lastly, number 22, you have a question?
I just had a follow-up question for staff, just based on Madam Pro-Tim's question. Is there any resource that I should be looking at for tracking these 4% type requests? Like, there's nothing that pairs, you know, tracking our development cases with that type of commitment.
I think we're, well, staff is internally working on our, updating our database with all that information, at least through proposed and a approved rezonings. So we are, we're building that database back and capturing that, at least internally.
Thank you.
We don't classify whether or not it's Lytec or not.
You said it will classify?
It will not.
It will not?
It doesn't.
Is there a way to find the Lytec?
Deep diving.
So just defer to staff on that then.
So I will say that sometimes we are not aware that, at the rezoning stage, that a project is going to seek Lytec. Sometimes that happens organically when folks are developing by right. So there's a lot to track and that information, for instance, when someone submits a site plan, they don't tell us that they're, how they're financing or whether they're, you know, receiving credits. So it's, it's a little harder, it's not information that naturally comes to us.
I think just specifically where it's, it is shared that they are going after the 4%.
We can, we can definitely do that. If it's shared with us, we can certainly make a note of that.
I don't think you should track everyone's, but just when they tell us.
Yep.
All right. Lastly, item number 23, proposed, I'm sorry, number 22, zoning map change 1202 Ellis Road. If you want to speak like an auctioneer, perfectly fine. No, go ahead.
This one should be pretty short, hopefully. Mayor Williams, Madam Pro-Tim Middleton, and Honorable Councilmembers, good evening. I am Peyton Burgess with the Planning Department and I'm happy to be here with you tonight. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Martin Coulter of Thomason Hutton for two parcels of land totaling 1.24 acres and located at 1202 and 1206 Ellis Road. The current zoning is residential rural and the applicant proposes to change this designation to residential suburban multifamily with a textual development plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow up to 20 single-family and/or duplex units. The properties are currently designated mixed residential neighborhood on the place-type map and the proposed zoning is generally consisted with the designated place type. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the staff report. Are there any questions or comments? All right. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. And I have Mr. Jewell. So you're, you're just speaking.
Yes. I'll probably need about six minutes if that's okay.
All right, sorry.
So I'll, I'll try to talk as fast as Mr. Biker, but he's, he's the champion when it comes to that. Good evening, Mayor and, and fellow council members. Again, I'm Dan Jewell. I'm a landscape architect and principal with Thomason Hutton. We're a planning, engineering, and landscape architecture firm. Our office is at 2510 Meridian Parkway and I live at 1025 Gloria Avenue, both in Durham. We're the applicants for this, what I think, very modest proposal. The current rural residential zoning on this property would only allow one house on the 1 and 1/4 acres that these two parcels comprise. This is a location where the place-type map calls for a much higher residential density, mixed residential neighborhood. We agree with both the staff and the Planning Commission that this site is an appropriate location for a small infill residential project. The location is only about a quarter mile from the American Tobacco Trail and relatively close to Durham Tech and the Briggs Avenue Commerce Park in a neighborhood that is primarily made up of townhomes and older single-family homes, if you look at a map. The addition of single and two-family homes in this location on small lots will provide missing middle housing that is compatible with the surrounding area and further bolster the comprehensive plan goal of creating a mixed residential neighborhood in this area. You can see from the list of text commitments that we have complied with the staff requests for items including left-turn lanes, driveway locations, construction of shared bike and pedestrian facilities on Ellis and Riddle Roads, and we've also agreed to a request we had at the Planning Commission to use native plant materials for street trees, et cetera. In addition, as a follow-up, on reflection of some of the written comments we saw from the Planning Commissions and subsequent conversations we have, we would like to demonstrate our sincerity in committing to providing a mix of missing middle types. So even though our application says single-family and/or duplex-type units, we would like to strengthen the current text commitment by saying that this development will contain single-family and/or duplex units by adding additional language that says, "At least 50% of the units shall be in the form of attached houses or duplexes." I did provide this language to Ms. Burgess in advance, so she has that in writing and we can, we can work on finally crafting that. So in conclusion, in the spirit of keeping the presentation short, we hope you can agree that this zoning request will provide much-needed missing middle housing to this part of Durham at a very modest scale that fits into the existing neighborhood fabric and will follow the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation for approval and move to grant our zoning request. Thank you. That concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers, so therefore I'll declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, just for the applicant. I noticed you included the maximum of 20 units. Was there a minimum?
The, I think putting the 20 units on there was simply, theoretically, this could, many could be built, but from a planning standpoint, if we're doing duplexes and some single-family, really, even a really good planner and designer is going to be hard-pressed to get more than 10 or 11 units on the site. So realistically, that's what it's going to be with 1 and 1/4 acres. Even the best density for townhouses, which we're not proposing, would be maybe 10 units to the acre. So we think it's roughly going to be about 10 units, something like that. Hope that helps.
Thank you.
All right. No other comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. I appreciate that. And I like the idea of using this, the, the mixed residential neighborhood to increase density in that, in that parcel. I did drive the site today and as you said, there's, there's some, there's some industrial use across rural road, but it's mostly like older single-family homes in that area. And so I do appreciate the additional text commitment to committing to at least some, as you said, duplexes or I think you said attached, whatever term, the term was. But that it would be essentially, you're talking, you're going to add to the variety of housing choices there because there are a lot of single families, so this will add to that.
That's right. I try to use ordinance terms, detached houses or duplexes, I think are the ones that are in the ordinance.
Right, so that meets the goal of having a variety of choices in the, in the vicinity of housing types. So appreciate that change and I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. All right, no other comments. Then I will, sorry. I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of residential role and establishing the same as the residential suburban multifamily with a textual agreement.
Move to read.
Development plan.
Move to read.
Second.
Spin move the properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. All right, please close.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute 160D-605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
Spin move the properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Colleagues, I believe that satisfies, yes, ma'am.
Just one other matter. I just wanted to just take a moment to just state and be very transparent. I had a conversation with the mayor. I know at work session, the conversation came up about how many boards and commissions and everything. I know that there are 29 boards and commissions. I did make sure that the mayor knew. I serve on one that I'm a voting member on and because of that, I actually took on additional contract work and I am not available as frequently as I have been in the past. And so I, I do want to make sure that folks understand, like, the flexibility that I have is not open all the time and so it's good to have more conversations than fewer. Serving as alternate on many of, many of the boards and commissions and I try to get to as many of the meetings that I can. I'm not one for just, you know, showing up some of the time. I usually try to be there on a regular basis and I think for, specifically for the Citizens' Advisory and the HSAC and the workers' rights, those are three that I could not make work. I am a mother of three. I, I want to make sure that I prioritize the needs of my children as well and evening meetings every day or, you know, each Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday is, just doesn't work for me. So I did want to just state that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to follow up. I know that you heard me earlier, but I'm going to just follow up that request to get an update on the, that interactive map for the Faithful Street Corridor. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
You need an excused absence for Thursday, Mayor?
I thought I requested it.
We did? Okay, I don't remember.
Chelsea, did I request it? Because Chelsea reads everything and she, like, she doesn't miss anything. Did I, Middleton?
Yeah.
Because it was just a Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, I yielded it to Middleton. All right, I'm good. All right, guys, let's go home. Thank you. We adjourned at 10:43. Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
Yep.